Mayor Marlin.
I was just gonna say it's now six o'clock, but Sharice, I think you had something to say?
Yeah, I just wanted to say I might have to dip out for a minute because my mom's home care worker is supposed to be here by now and she's not. So I'll be carrying the computer with me, but I'll be on mute and you won't see my video, so, which is not unusual. But I'm just, just letting you know that, that's, I don't mean any, and here she is now, that, I don't mean any disrespect, okay?
Thanks for letting us know. Okay. Okay, well, I'd like to welcome you all to the special meeting of the Urbana City Council. It's Monday, May 3rd, 2021. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Sacks?
Here.
Ms. Hershey?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Colbrook?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here. I've asked for a motion to add council communication and input as the first order of business on the agenda, to give the outgoing council members a chance to make remarks if they so wish.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Bill Brown, seconded by Mary Alice. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Sacks?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. So as you all know, the sole purpose of this meeting is to conduct the oaths of office for the incoming council and to say goodbye to our outgoing council members. Every four years, following the municipal elections in the city of Urbana, we transition leadership. Tonight, we want to say thank you to five elected or appointed council members who collectively have provided over three decades of public service on the Urbana City Council. These are Dennis Roberts, Bill Brown, Jared Miller, Bill Colbrook, and Eric Sacks. They all shared the willingness to serve their community, make difficult decisions, establish policy to move our community forward. And they all shared the goal of making us better as a community. And I know that they will continue to serve in many other ways. I have to say it's been an honor to work with you, and we can be very proud of all that's been accomplished over the last term, especially over the last year during a time of historic challenges and change. And I also want to recognize other appointed or elected council members who served during the past four years. For City Council Ward Two, that included Eric Jacobson and Julie Laut. For Ward Three, Erin Ammons. And in Ward Six, Dean Hazen. And in the City Clerk's Office, Charlie Smythe served for three of the past four years. That followed sixteen years of service two different times on the Urbana City Council. So I wanted to invite each of the outgoing council members to give brief comments if you wish, and please limit your remarks to four minutes or less in keeping with our council rules. Does anyone want to offer any comments? Bill Brown?
Sure, I'll start. Well, I just want to say it's been a real privilege to represent people for Ward Four for the last eight years. I'd like to thank my friend Esther Pat for encouraging me to run and for always being available to answer questions and offer suggestions. Also to Charlie Smythe and Eric Jacobson for their mentorship the first few years. Charlie also made a huge contribution to the city clerk by digitizing thousands of records. A lot of our early ordinances and resolutions and council packets and everything hadn't been digitized and were online and searchable. He, that really made a big difference and made it easier to do some historical research on things. And he also created a methodology for approving and tracking closed session minutes, which has also been really helpful to get us back on track with those. I'd also like to thank my partner of twenty-five years, Brad Hudson, for emotional support and occasional reality checks. He's been one of our regular viewers on Channel Six almost the whole time, so I think we'll be going from twenty-five viewers to twenty-four pretty soon. That's kind of a joke. We're, I don't, nobody really knows how many viewers we have. Also, thanks to my neighbor Tom and a handful of friends and neighbors who have kept the fire pit going almost every Friday night during the pandemic, providing welcome social relief when there were a few other options available. My years on council, I served with fourteen other council members, two of whom I never met in person, and only Dennis, Mayor Marlin, the entire time. When I came on, we had to immediately juggle the budget to make up for unexpected shortfall of some, I don't remember, over a million dollars, I think, after a decision on the hospital property taxes. We struggled for several years with deficit spending and raising sales taxes, and finally, within the last few years, with Elizabeth Han and in finance, I think we've attained some financial sustainability. But there are a lot of open positions, especially in public work, so I truly hope that positions that we've budgeted for the past couple of years will actually be filled soon. City staff are the ones who actually carry the load and make things work. We've been very lucky to have a lot of talent on that front. I'm excited about the new council. I've known Chandra, Chris, and James for several years. I've gotten to know Jaya through a few extended phone calls and emails. I've been pleased with the thoughtful focus I've seen so far from Grace Wilkin. I'm honored to call myself your constituent now. Look forward to your efforts to keep Urbana moving forward as a great bike-friendly, walk-friendly city for healthy living, working, and doing business, and enjoying the incredible diversity and opportunity to connect with people from a variety of backgrounds. So thank you very much and good luck.
Thanks, Bill. Anyone else? Dennis?
Yeah. Hey, hello, everybody. So here we go, at the end of a period of time of service. So first, I'd like to thank all my neighbors and friends in Ward Five, for whom I've had the privilege of serving for the last sixteen-plus years as representative on City Council. You know, I started my term on council under Todd Satherway, who appointed me to fill up the remaining months of Laura Hoop's term back in December of 2004. Sixteen years, you know, have passed, and it's time to let other younger voices be heard and to gain experience by serving on the council for the city. So I certainly offer Chandra Bishop my best wishes as she begins her term of service as the alderwoman for Ward Five. So good luck. I also would like to thank the other council members, past and present, who, for their thoughtful interaction and dedication as my colleagues, I really appreciate their time. In my many projects I've been involved in, I've crafted some legislation, I've advocated for issues I thought were important to the community. Ward Five is pretty large and includes the historic downtown, which is unique. And I've supported downtown, downtown events and encouraged tourism through the creation of the Joseph Royer Arts and Architectural District Downtown. We've dedicated plaques to draw attention to eight of the significant buildings that are designed by Royer in and near the downtown, which I think is important. In 2008, we celebrated Urbana's 175th birthday with the year of programs and events, including a commemorative calendar, a hundred and seventy-five-inch-long birthday cake. And with author Alona Makovsky, I authored, co-authored a history of our city, which is being available by Acorn Publishing. I've supported the downtown development that respects the historic built environment. I wrote the demolition delay ordinance, and I spoke in Springfield for the creation of the downtown historic district that was recently created. You know, it's been a while ago, but I supported the Smoke Free Urbana campaign, and I helped pass the Urbana Smoke Free Ordinance, which barred smoking in offices, bars, and restaurants. And we did this three months before the state made it a mandate across the entire United, entire state of Illinois. Everybody thought the bars would close and it would be chaos, but actually, we found out that more people went to bars because it was a lot easier to breathe there. Then as chairman of the Urbana Sister Cities Program, we established three global partnerships in Zomba, Malawi, Haizhou District, and Guangzhou City in China, and Tionville, France. The committee's humanitarian work in Malawi, sponsored by a grant funding from the Bill and Belinda Gates Foundation, which was awarded through Sister Cities International, resulted in infrastructure improvements in three primary schools and the city hospital in Malawi, for which we received the Champagne Urbana award for humanitarian efforts and have received also, we were named the Sister City of the Year. Tomorrow, we debut the Let It Be music video, a collaboration between our local artists in Urbana and Tionville. It's a parting gift, which I am happy to give to the city of Urbana, and I encourage the new council to retain and build upon our international bonds of friendship to promote peace through mutual respect, understanding, and cooperation, one individual, one community at a time. Thank you for this opportunity and take care. Bye.
Thanks, Dennis. Anyone else? Sorry about that. Jared, go ahead.
Thanks. I wish I had prepared something as eloquent as Bill's speech. That was quite excellent, Bill. I'm not big on goodbyes, but I want the people of Ward Seven to know that it's been a real honor and, you know, this is, this is, it was a life-changing experience to be able to be on council. I will never, ever look at government in the same way. I will never, I can never unknow the importance of local government, and I hope that I've been able to communicate that to some young folks and look at the young folks we have coming on council now. If I'd been on, I wouldn't be the only, I wouldn't be the only one, and I'm gonna, I'm sad I'm gonna miss out on that opportunity. But I'm glad to see young voices are gonna be coming in my stead. Huge shout out to all of the people on city staff who took a person who knew nothing about governments and helped teach, teach them, you know, everything that there was to know about it. You know, you just don't realize how extensively local government touches our lives, and it's incredible to have been a part of growing the city and fighting for the things that I've believed in throughout this process. So, you know, I'm excited to see what happens going forward, and I'm, you know, I wish the best for everybody who's coming on council and for everyone who's served with me now and in the past. It's a sacrifice not many are willing to make, and I appreciate each and every one of you for being willing to do that. Yeah, so, you know, my wife and I have laid down firm roots in Urbana, so we'll be, we'll be here, and I, you know, new council members, and some of you I personally reach out to, but as always, you know, if anyone ever wants the ear from somebody who's been on council, wants to know things, you know, I'm here, you know. I think most of the council members would, would say the same. You know, reach out to any of us and we'll be happy to share thoughts and help, help you guys learn about all the things you need to know. There's a lot coming down, down the way to you guys. It can be pretty overwhelming, so feel free to lean on me personally. I'm sure many other council members feel the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Jared. Bill Colbrook?
Well, my tenure is short, so I'm gonna keep my comments short as well. I'm not, I'm also not big on, on goodbyes, and hopefully for me, it won't be goodbye. I want to thank the mayor for this honor and privilege to serve on the city council. It's been an honor to serve the residents of Ward Six and the, the other residents of Urbana. It's been, it's been a lot of fun. Government work is public service. It's true public service. And, and for the incoming members of the council, I guess that would be my only piece of advice, is be that public servant that you have always wanted, you know, in us. Like I said, it's been an honor, privilege. I'm hoping to continue to serve my community in some capacity. Really haven't fleshed that out yet, but I'm not going away. I'm going to be a lifelong resident of Urbana, and I love this city, and I want to continue to serve in some capacity. So good luck to the incoming council, and you've got a lot of challenges ahead of you, and, and good luck with all that. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. And Eric?
I'd like to say it's been a great privilege to serve. I'd like to thank the mayor for appointing me back in December and for the other city council members for great support and working together well, and of course, city staff and, and the city clerk. I think you guys have a great term ahead, and I look forward to the continued success of the city of Urbana. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. And again, thank you to all of the council members. I wish we could all be in person for this moment, but we can't, so we, we, we send our Zoom best wishes. And as you pointed out, there's a lot of work to do in the future. I still have all your phone numbers, and I will be using them, so thank you for that in advance. So with that, we will now proceed to the oaths of office. And I believe first up is the city clerk will swear in the mayor. And that, actually, she will do that in person. I'm in the council chambers, and so is Ms. Clark.
Would you stand, please, mayor? I wish you'd like me to, and repeat after me, please. I give your name to-
I, Diane Wolf-Marlin.
Having been elected to the office of mayor-
Having been elected to the office of mayor-
Of the city of Urbana in the county of Champagne-
Of the city of Urbana in the county of Champagne-
Aforesaid.
Aforesaid.
Okay, do solemnly swear or affirm-
Do solemnly swear or affirm-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States-
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois-
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties-
That I will faithfully discharge the duties-
Of the office of mayor-
Of the office of mayor-
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, mayor.
Now I will swear in the city clerk. Please raise your right hand.
Thank you.
I-
I, Phyllis D. Clark.
Having been elected to the office of city clerk-
Having been elected to the office of city clerk-
In the city of Urbana-
In the city of Urbana.
In the county of Champagne-
In the county of Champagne.
Illinois aforesaid.
Illinois aforesaid.
Do solemnly swear or affirm-
Do solemnly swear or affirm-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States-
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of city clerk-
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of city clerk-
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much, Mayor.
Okay, and now let's proceed with swearing in each of the new council members individually. We'll begin with Mary Alice Wu for Ward One. Please raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Mary Alice S. Wu.
Having been elected to the office of alderperson, Ward One-
Having been elected to the office of alderperson, Ward One-
In the city of Urbana-
In the city of Urbana.
In the county of Champagne, Illinois aforesaid.
In the county of Champagne, Illinois aforesaid.
Do solemnly swear or affirm-
Do solemnly swear or affirm-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of alderperson, Ward One.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of alderperson, Ward One.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations. All right, next up, Christopher Evans. Please raise your right hand. And repeat after me. I state your name. You're muted, Christopher.
Okay, there we go.
I, Christopher Evans.
I, Christopher Evans.
Having been elected to the office of alderperson, Ward Two-
Having been elected to the office of alderperson, Ward Two-
In the city of Urbana-
In the city of Urbana.
In the county of Champagne, Illinois aforesaid.
In the county of Champagne, Illinois aforesaid.
Do solemnly swear or affirm-
Do solemnly swear or affirm-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties-
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of alderperson, Ward Two.
Of the office of alderperson, Ward Two.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Christopher. Sharice Hershey?
I, Sharice Hershey.
I, Sharice Hershey.
Having been elected to the office of alderperson, alderperson, Ward Three-
Having been elected to the office of alderperson, Ward Three-
In the city of Urbana-
In the city of Urbana.
In the county of Champagne, Illinois aforesaid.
In the county of Champagne, Illinois aforesaid.
Do solemnly swear or affirm-
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties-
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties-
Of the office of alderperson, Ward Three-
Of the office of alderperson, Ward Three.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Sharice.
Thank you very much.
Next, Jaya Colasetti. I, Jaya Colasetti.
I, Jalen Sushila Colasetti.
Have been elected to the office of alderperson, Ward Four.
Having been elected to the office of alderperson, Ward Four.
In the city of Urbana-
In the city of Urbana.
In the county of Champagne, Illinois aforesaid.
In the county of Champagne, Illinois aforesaid.
Do solemnly swear or affirm-
Do solemnly swear or affirm-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties-
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties-
Of the office of alderperson, Ward Four.
Of the office of alderperson, Ward Four.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Ward Five. This is Chandra Bishop. I, please state your name.
I, Chandra Monique Bishop.
Having been elected to the office of alderperson, Ward Five-
Having been elected, alderperson of Ward Five.
In the city of Urbana-
In the city of Urbana.
In the county of Champagne, Illinois aforesaid.
In the county of Champagne, Illinois aforesaid.
Do solemnly swear or affirm-
Do solemnly swear or affirm-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties-
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties-
Of the office of alderperson, Ward Five.
Of the office of alderperson, Ward Five.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my abilities.
Congratulations, Chandra.
Thank you.
Next up, Ward Six. It's Grace. Please raise your right hand and repeat your name. I-
I, Grace Wilkin.
Having been elected to the office of alderperson, Ward Six.
Having been elected to the office of alderperson, Ward Six.
In the city of Urbana-
In the city of Urbana.
That I, in the county of Champagne, Illinois aforesaid.
County of Champagne, Illinois aforesaid.
Do solemnly swear or affirm-
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties-
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties-
Of the office of alderperson, Ward Six.
Of the office of alderperson, Ward Six.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Grace. And last is James Quisenberry for Ward Seven. I, please state your name. You're muted. Unmute, please.
I, James Paul Quisenberry.
Having been elected to the office of alderperson, Ward Seven.
Having been elected to the office of alderperson, Ward Seven.
In the city of Urbana-
In the city of Urbana.
In the county of Champagne, Illinois aforesaid.
In the county of Champagne, Illinois aforesaid.
Do solemnly swear or affirm-
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties-
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties-
Of the office of alderperson, Ward Seven.
Of the alder, office of alderperson, Ward Seven.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations, James. Our new council has been sworn in, and I would ask Jason to please move the outgoing council members to the audience participation list, and the new council will remain as panelists.
Congratulations, everybody.
Congratulations. Thank you all once again.
Good luck.
Okay, we will move on to the last item of business on the agenda, which is public input. First on the list is Tracy Chong.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Hi, I'm Tracy Chong. First, I would like to say welcome to the new council members. However, for the exiting council members, even in your exiting speech, I'm set to say that most of you council members speak as extremely privileged a banner residence, almost pretending like the police violence, excessive use of force by UPD officers, city staff's dishonest efforts to suppress information, especially police information. Your support for Mayor Marlin's effort to censor the public in Urbana, you talk as if it just did not happen. The new council members will inherit an extremely corrupt relationship between city staff and UPD leadership, as demonstrated again in the latest Taser incidents reviewed last week. These are incidents that the public has brought up over and over again, and it was confirmed last Wednesday. This is not public service, like Bill Colbrook said. You have ignored residents who bring up difficult issues. You have not been the public servant serving your community. You have claimed success in discussions about improvements, like the Ten Shared Principles and changes in the use of force policy. You've made resolutions about the use of force and de-escalation. But I hope that you know that in reality, none of your efforts actually mattered, because all you did was use words to cover up an actual problem. There has been no accountability because you refuse to have difficult, meaningful conversations. There has been no accountability because you refuse to have difficult, meaningful conversations. Please, please watch the CPRV meeting last week, where there was not one mention of de-escalation. It was not discussed. Instead, what do we have? We have UPD leadership making light of serious misconduct, like a police officer running around holding a taser in one hand and a gun in the other hand. And then the discussions that followed were how the only options were either, how it was shooting someone in the back with a taser or using a gun and shooting someone. Seems like everyone forgot that de-escalation was an option. This is what you get when ego and croneism gets in the way. I hope new council members remember this and do better. You were elected in a climate where all these issues are at the forefront and what's most important to the public. So I hope that at every council meeting, this is your priority. For the old council members, instead, in your speech, instead of addressing the important issues, you thank your friends, some of them ex-city staff, who played a role in suppressing transparency and accountability, even landing a banner in four-year lawsuits, which the city lost, wasting taxpayers' money. One of you even shamefully used your short-lived position as city council member to smear and accuse these newcomer city council candidates and spreading fears of terrorism to gain votes for your own benefit. I hope you reflect on this and in no way that you have performed a public service to the community. Thank you.
Next up is Jeannie Covert.
Good evening, everybody. Sorry, I made my dinner. I'm simply gonna call out a thank you for working with a lot of different people on the city of Urbana to put together this weekend's John Lewis's Voting Rights Advancement Act Day of Action. There's been a lot of moving parts and we've had a lot of really good cooperation and I just wanted to say thank you. Thank you.
Thank you Jeannie. Next up is Wayne Williams.
I would just like to congratulate the new city council and welcome to public service. And thank you for being willing to serve.
Thank you Wayne. Next is Alan Max Axelrod.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Alright, so could you put the clock up please, I'm sorry. Thank you. So I wanted to actually, and this may seem very rare to you all, thank the outgoing city council as well as those who have retained their seats for passing the resolution on utility shut-offs. In 2021, you were the first body, whether private or public, to do so. That is in stark contrast to 2020, that's what listening looks like, thank you for doing that. Since that was passed, we unlocked $80 million from the governor issuing an executive order 2021-07, which provides, as I mentioned, $80 million to 80,000 households, when again, the Attorney General estimated that 800,000 households are at risk. So that is why last week, the Bloomington City Council, the Macon County Democrats, and yes, also the Champagne County Democrats, all voted to pass resolutions very similar to the one passed by this body on April 12th. On Thursday of last week, HB 2877, the bill to unlock $1.4 billion in rent and utility assistance, directly paid to housing providers and utility providers, in some cases including municipal utilities, was passed out of the state legislature. It awaits Governor JB Pritzker's signature. And unless if he's willing to wait until after the eviction moratorium lapses, this money will be in people's hands before things get way out of control. Unfortunately, the struggle isn't over because the executive order did not enact a utility shut-off moratorium and we have gotten property management staff on record saying that yes, they have used utility shut-offs as a way to evict. I'm not asking for additional legislation from this body on this particular issue. I'm trying to just update you all on what has been happening because we're all busy. The No Ammon Shut-Offs campaign has, at this point, still remained a zero-dollar budget campaign effort, spanning the state of four dozen organizations and counting. And that's pretty much the synopsis of that part of the public comments. Now down to municipal concerns, I want to draw to this body's attention how many counties in Illinois over the last four years have managed to eliminate veteran chronic homelessness when we have not. And some of these are a bit close to home. Of course, there's the ones up north like Will County and Lake County, as we had gone over during the People City Council event. Rockford, Illinois has eliminated both veteran chronic homelessness and chronic homelessness for everybody else by the legal definitions. That does not mean that everybody is housed. But one thing that was particularly surprising to me was the fact that there is a Central Illinois Continuum of Care, not inclusive of Champagne County, that had ended chronic homelessness for veterans in 2019. Remembering that there are 141 HUD homeless folks from the 2020 count and we are awaiting, at least I've yet to find the 2021 count of how many HUD homeless folks there are. This seems like a very reachable goal through intergovernmental agreements that this body can choose to prioritize. In particular, we have to look at the fact that this body has ostensibly become more progressive than where it has been by the public branding. I would hope that means that we join other counties like Christian, Shelby, Multrie, Coles, Douglas, and Edgar, all in ending chronic veteran homelessness as soon as possible so that we can actually get to ending chronic homelessness, thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Sarah Nixon.
Hello, city council, this is Sarah Nixon. I would just like to echo what other speakers from the public have expressed this evening. Welcome to the new city council members and briefly, I would urge the current city council to redouble efforts to focus on police accountability, police reform. In Urbana, issues have been brought before the council for the past year at almost every city council meeting. And there's a feeling that we're, members of the public who are raising issues and exposing issues are being tolerated by city government and little more. And yet, the issues are serious, they are deeply entrenched and we all need to work together and we need the council to do everything in its power to take very seriously the concerns brought to you, once again, by the public and also to be watching what is happening at the Civilian Police Review Board, support that board in its efforts to continue to improve the process so as to genuinely serve the Urbana electorate. I can tell you that I have experienced firsthand severe and in fact devastating wrongdoing and misconduct on the part of Urbana's Police Department or members of that department. I know for a fact that problems are run very deep at the UPD. And I have met others whose stories have yet to be told, have yet to be heard, who have, whose lives have been profoundly negatively impacted by misconduct, again, at the Urbana Police Department. I am not saying that all of the officers employed at the UPD are in any way problematic. Unfortunately, it tends to be a minority, a small number of officers who simply disregard the rules, the standards, codes of ethics and policies and so on, which you're all very familiar with. If you have been following events this past year, there are problems at the leadership level. I will, I'll conclude here, but once again, urge every one of you to focus attention and effort and join with us, who, members of the public, who are speaking on behalf of many others and calling for real accountability, real reform and professionalism from our men and women in blue, thank you.
Okay, does anyone else wish to address this meeting, the special meeting of the Urbana City Council? Alright, I don't see any other hand raised, hands raised. So with no further business before us, this meeting is.
And Diane, somebody just raised their hand.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Angel Johnson.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, good evening, everyone, how are you? I'm Pastor Angel Johnson. I live in Urbana. And I would just like to ask a question. First off, I'm concerned about the video calls. I also sent a letter to your office for the committee. Every week my hand have been missed. Or it's like my mute keep jumping on, but I take it off, I still can't get in to talk or speak. Okay, so I don't know what that's about. This has been happening now, I think, for two weeks. But I was trying to get into, just let you know that we're, we have an Angels Youth Center that we've been operating for years. And what happened is the pandemic has came and this is in our home. And we also have a business, a daycare business. But we were just asking if someone can give me a call so we can talk about, I hear a lot about gun violence, I'm concerned about that in our community. And I have a Beat the Street program that I like to share with the mayor and other people in the community. But I haven't been fortunate enough to get a response from the city. And I have approached these things several times with you guys and saying that we're Angels Youth Center, we're here and we like to bring some activities for the youth to the community. And we also do a lot of other things with them that we would like to share with you. Okay, so if someone can give me a call back, I appreciate it. I have really spoken with several members, okay, of Urbana City Council. And from my understanding, just not, I guess I'm just not speaking with the right people, okay? And I'd like to know also, do you have funding for the youth? And if you do, how can we get information to apply for the right funding? Because I spoke with a person, I'm not gonna say no names because every time I call names, y'all say my mute button acting up and you can't hear me. So I won't say the names, okay, if that's what you want. I won't call out no names I spoke with, but you know who you are and you know I have been reaching out asking for funding, okay? Because since the pandemic hit, I have to remove the daycare and the youth center out of our home. Now I up my home up just so that we can help our community. I'm a pastor of the community, I'm a youth pastor. So I really enjoy just pitching in and helping out and we never asked for funding, okay? Before this pandemic, the good Lord know he been good to us and blessed us. Well, we was able to do this from our family. Our family gave to the community and gave back and helped out. And we just pitch in there and get in there and wherever you need us at, we're willing to come and help you, okay? But since the pandemic has hit homes for everyone, everyone is going through, everyone need funding. Okay, we like to see if we can have someone to help us receive some funding. We, a nonprofit organization, 501(c)(3), all our books in order and everything. And I'm reaching out, reaching out, but I must really be just talking to the wrong people. So if you can, can you give me a call, reach back out to me, please? I'm just trying to better the community and continue our work.
Yes, we'll reach out to you. Next up is James Kilgore.
Good evening, I just, I'm speaking as the co-director of First Followers Reentry Program. We've worked closely with the city of Urbana, trying to provide services and support for people coming home from prison and facilitating their transition into the community. Tonight, I really want to welcome the new council members. It's a real pleasure to see some fresh faces, fresh ideas. And I just want to say that I hope that you will make a big play toward a grand legacy in Urbana by acknowledging the problem of gun violence, the problem of violence in this community. And using your awareness of that problem to allocate the funding that's coming down to the city of Urbana. And perhaps through intergovernmental agreements, be able to facilitate some of the funding that's also coming to the county and the city of Champagne to put together facilities and programs that are going to address this issue. I think you're all aware of the fact that this is not a problem that police are solving. This is a problem that needs solutions that provide resources to the black community in particular in Urbana and in Champagne, because this is where the main targets of gun violence rest. And we need programs and we need places for these programs to happen. Community centers, trauma-informed therapy, housing, support for job creation, support for families that have been impacted by gun violence. All of these things, I know they're on your agenda, but I really think this is a moment where we need to use our imagination. And I just want to make a, maybe a slightly different point than many people make, but when you go to downtown Urbana, the thing that's most striking to me is that there are three buildings in the middle of that downtown area that are unused or useless. And that would be that White Elephant Hotel that has been sitting there empty and sucking up investment dollars and city funds for years and years and hasn't, hasn't yet made Urbana into a world-class tourist destination, nor is it ever going to be. So let's try to use some imagination about how we might use that facility. Then we have the Urbana Civic, which has been shuttered. And then the third useless building we have, the most useless of all, in my opinion, is the jail. It's an outdated jail, it's a punitive facility. And in this era where community violence is proliferating and where there's massive movements to defund police, to defund incarceration, let's look at getting rid of that downtown jail and make that be part of your legacy as the new city council. Welcome aboard, welcome to the net of troubles and challenges, but opportunities to exercise your imagination in ways that this city has never seen. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, does anyone else wish to address the Urbana City Council?
Okay. Does anyone else wish to address, address the Urbana City Council? Okay. Seeing no more hands and there's no further business before this special meeting of the Urbana City Council, we stand adjourned. And we'll move directly into the committee of the whole meeting chaired by Mary Alice Wu's, as the clerk gives the signal.
Phyllis, are you ready?
Yes.
All right. So I'd like to call this committee of the whole meeting, uh, to order with the clerk. Please call the roll.
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hersi?
Here.
Ms. Colacetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilkins?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Thank you.
All right. The first item on our agenda is approval of the minutes from previous meetings from April 19, 2021. Can I have a motion? I'll move to approve those minutes.
I'll second.
Moved by Shandra and sorry, moved by Sharice and seconded by Shandra. Are there any corrections? All right. Well, the clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Uh, oh, Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkins?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Sorry for the delay in your names, guys. I'll learn who you are.
Uh, next up is additions to the agenda. I believe the mayor has a proclamation. Uh, Diane, is that correct? You're muted.
Yes, I have a proclamation for municipal clerks weeks that I'd like to add. I'd like to put that after the presentation on enterprise zones and subdivisions.
Okay. So that would be item number 12. All right.
No, it would be, it would be under item number four.
Oh, sorry. I don't remember.
Um, can I make a statement a little bit? Uh, when you're, when you're doing proclamations, they actually do not need to be added to the agenda or even voted on because they're just things that you are presenting outside of whatever it is that the council needs to do.
All right. Any other additions to the agenda? All right. Well, we will start with, uh, council member training session for the enterprise zones and subdivisions. Is, uh, who's presenting on that tonight? Stephanie, are you presenting on that?
I am. I am. I'm gonna share, uh, share my screen with y'all. Um, I just wanted to do a, hang on one second. The here we go. Okay. Um, tonight we just wanted to share some information about enterprise zone with you because we'll be, um, bringing some, uh, development agreements to you in the future. And so, um, we'll just get started. This will just take a few minutes. Um, an enterprise zone is a design, defined geographic area created to stimulate business retention and growth as well as neighborhood revitalization in depressed areas. Enterprise zones are designated by the state but managed locally. I, uh, Steph McMahon am the administrator for the city of Urbana Enterprise Zone. Historically, the focus of enterprise zones was industrial growth, but the program also allows for commercial and residential development. There are approximately 100 zones in Illinois and applications to create new zones are competitive. The life of an enterprise zone is 15 years. And it just enterprise zone incentives such as investment tax credits, sales tax exemption on manufacturing machinery and equipment, and also utility tax exemptions. The local jurisdictions, that means us, we manage two incentives, including sales tax exemption on building materials and property tax abatement for qualifying projects built within an enterprise zone. The city of Urbana's enterprise zone was designated on January 1st, 2016, which means it will expire at the end of 2031. Urbana's enterprise zone incentivizes projects for new and remodeled industrial and commercial projects and for new residential projects, which is our Think Urbana program where we market and encourage people to build new homes in Urbana. This slideshow shows a copy of our enterprise zone map, which is also, uh, available on our city website and is an overlay on the county's GIS website. So if you look up an address on that county GIS site, you can click on our enterprise zone and see if the property falls within the zone. The taxing bodies that participate in property tax abatement along with the city include the county, the school district, the park district, the township, MTD and Parkland, though Parkland does not participate in the residential abatements. For a project to be eligible for enterprise zone incentives, it must be at least $80,000 and requires a building permit. Residential projects are a little different than commercial and they have to be new, uh, new construction. By the end of last year, our enterprise zone had helped 107 projects at the investment of 116.5 million dollars. And this added 17 and a half million to our equalized assessed value of our tax base and created or retained 475 jobs, 500 new residential units and 94 new single-family and duplex homes. The enterprise zone is a tool the city will use to support new development and grow our community. Uh, so I kind of made it pretty simple there, but I'm always glad and available to answer any questions you guys have about the enterprise zone.
All right. Are there any questions for Steph? I'm gonna scroll through, uh, Grace?
Uh, thank you. I was wondering if there are any incentives for, um, remodeling existing homes or building on brownfields, or if this is exclusively for new development? And if that's kind of the national goal with this?
Our zone, uh, incentives are for new construction. Our grants department may have programs that come available through HUD and Home that Sheila Dodd would administer that might help with home renovation. She will probably be telling you more about that in the future.
And are they?
And the
Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead. I'm sorry. I was just gonna say, and the enterprise then zoned then has incentives that help with businesses to remodel or build new that, um, include that property tax abatement and sales tax exemption on building materials.
And is there any kind of encouragement for, um, like green building design and efficiency with that? Or is it just up to the standard codes?
Up to the standard codes for Urbana.
All right. Any other questions for Steph? Scrolling through to make sure I'm not missing anyone. Okay. Thank you so much. The next item on the agenda is a proclamation from mayor?
Actually, we have another, um, presentation, a quick training from Kevin on subdivisions.
Okay. You guys merged those two. Gotcha.
So I'll try and, I'll try and keep it brief enough that you stay awake during it. Um, okay. Uh, so subdivisions, um, real quickly, I just want to talk about some basics with subdivisions. Um, go through differences between minor and, uh, major developments and then preliminary and final plats. And then I'm gonna touch on what's called our extraterritorial jurisdiction. Um, so just to jump right into it, um, subdivisions, uh, when we talk about subdivisions, uh, well, first of all, I should introduce myself. Um, I'm Kevin Garcia. I'm the principal planner. Um, so I supervise the, the planning division. So we deal with, uh, with land use, with zoning, and things of that nature. So welcome to all new council members. So when we talk about subdivisions and planning, uh, we're not talking about specific named subdivisions per se. Um, we're really talking about the process of splitting larger pieces of land into smaller pieces of land. So subdividing the land. Um, and usually that's because the owner wants to develop the land, um, in a specific way in, in relatively short order. Um, so typically what we'll see in Urbana, which we, we haven't been seeing many subdivisions, um, for, for quite some time. But typically what we'll see is, might see a large piece of farmland that somebody wants to, uh, split into smaller, uh, residential or commercial lots. Um, there occasionally we'll get a larger tract that's already sort of within the established town. That somebody just wants to, wants to cut into smaller pieces to develop. Um, occasionally, which is something that council doesn't see because it's, it's too small of a, of a type of subdivision, but we might get some duplexes that people want to, um, sort of split into two lots, um, and create sort of ownership of each half of, of a duplex. Um, so minor subdivisions are things that council won't see, but just for, for your benefit and education, uh, I just wanted to bring them up. So that's when somebody wants to split land into five lots or less. Um, and the land also already has to have things like streets, water, uh, electricity, sewers. Um, and those minor subdivisions are an administrative process. So we handle that on the staff level. We have to send those out for review from a multitude of agencies and utilities, um, and get their, get their feedback before, um, that gets approved. Then a major subdivision is, um, actually by definition, everything that's not a minor subdivision. So that's an easy, an easy definition. Um, then within, within subdivisions, we have what are called preliminary and final subdivisions or preliminary and final plats, we'll call them. Preliminary council will not see those. Those are reviewed by plan commission. Um, with the exception that if there is a waiver that is requested, which I'll talk about in a minute. Um, if there is a waiver, then council will see the waiver, um, that's requested. Um, I can pull up, let me share my screen. I'll just pull up an example, um, of a of a preliminary subdivision. Um, so preliminary subdivisions tend to have a lot more of the, of the bare bones. Uh, the bare bones essentials. So, so this first page just shows an overview. So this is Berenger Commons up in the northeast section of the city. So you see there are lots laid out. There are streets in there. Um, and then you'll get into more details with, if I can go on to further page, yeah, lots of text um, describing things. Um, but if you, so if you zoom in on the details, so you see they've got the streets laid out. Um, they have, uh, drainage. So here's a, a detention, um, basin here. Um, you'll see there are little, all of these little dots are, are manual covers, um, or other utilities. So the preliminary plat really lays out sort of the, the basic, um, underpinnings of, of developing that piece of land. And then so then, once the, uh, once the preliminary plat gets approved, then we move on to, if I can pull this up, um, to the final plat. And the final plat is something that council does review. And this, um, whoops. So the final plat has less, you know, less detail since all of the, you know, those big details have been laid out in the preliminary plat. Um, this is, this one is just for a section. So this says Berenger Commons subdivision number five. So a lot of times developers will, uh, will do the preliminary plat and then over time as they develop land, they'll, they'll do smaller chunks. So this is the fifth chunk of development for, for Berenger Commons. So you see on this, what they actually do is instead of just showing where all the lots and streets are, they actually put in dimensions. Um, so you can see, and they actually go out and place what are called pins in the ground. Um, so you can see the, you can actually physically go out and locate the corner of every property that's been platted. Uh, some of the older properties in town are, you know, it's harder to find those, um, but that's what we have surveys for. So yeah, so the final plat will show all the, the lots, the right, the rights of way. So the streets, um, sidewalks, um, and things. And and then I, I mentioned waivers earlier. So essentially, uh, a developer can ask for a waiver from, from any element that's required. Sorry, I might hear my kids playing outside. Um, from any development, uh, or from any regulation that's in the subdivision and land development ordinance, which governs subdivisions, as the name suggests. But to be granted a waiver, the developer has to claim some, some sort of, uh, or they have to state some reasoning for it. They just can't say, um, I want this waiver because I, I would like it. So there has to be some reasoning behind it. So they might ask for waivers of things like sidewalks, which I don't imagine we'd grant a waiver for a sidewalk. These days, unless maybe in an industrial subdivision on outskirts of town or something, um, or things like street width. Um, but again, they can ask for a waiver for, for any element or from any element of the subdivision ordinance. Uh, and then finally, we have what's called, we are a home rule municipality in the state of Illinois. Um, so that means we have a one and a half mile area surrounding the, the city limits. That's called the extraterritorial jurisdiction. And we have subdivision, um, authority over any subdivision that happens within that one and a half mile extraterritorial jurisdiction. So in your time on council, you might, um, well, yeah, I suppose if somebody, if somebody wanted to do a preliminary and then a final plat for a development that's out within a mile and a half of the city, then you would, you would see the final plat, um, for that. Uh, I, I don't recall many of those happening in my time here, but it's a possibility. Okay. That was probably a lot, definitely a crash course, but I'd be happy to, uh, to answer any questions you have about subdivisions.
Looks like J Lo?
Yeah. Um, I do have a quick question because I know that we have one that we're gonna be talking about today where the preliminary and the final are kind of smooshed together. I know you said this doesn't happen very often, but I'm curious, like, is that something that happens frequently? Could you talk a little bit about that?
Right. Yeah. So we do, and, and that's a great question. So we, we do offer a developer the option to do what we call a combination preliminary and final. So it just saves some, some time to do both of them at the same time. So if somebody in this, like in this case tonight, they are ready, you know, they're ready to go. Uh, we allow them to do it all at once. So essentially that's, that's the process. So they don't have to go through plan commission and then after they get the preliminary approved, then apply for the final plat. It's just more efficient that way.
Jade, did you have any other questions?
No, I just forgot to put my hand down. Thanks.
Sharice?
Okay, um, Kevin, um, I wanted, I guess what I wanted to know because like J O was talking about the, you know, we have this, um, uh, subdivision that we'll be, uh, voting on tonight. Now, are we allowing these two, um, the, the, uh, the conjugation of these two, uh, connect conjunction of these two particular levels to happen because of how long ago the, another city council had actually approved this, uh, development or?
No, no, this one tonight, um, the preliminary plat was just approved by plan commission a couple of weeks ago. So this isn't, this isn't one of those cases where somebody did the preliminary plat, say 30 years ago, 20 years ago is more like it, but, uh, and then they're coming in for a final. So they were ready to go with both of them at once.
Are, are you going to be presenting on this again when it comes up later?
I am not, but
Is anybody?
Yeah. Cat Trotter will be able to handle all of your tough questions admirably.
Okay. I don't think I have any tough questions, but okay, thanks.
Well.
All right. Any other questions for Kevin? Okay. Uh, we will. Thank you very much, Kevin.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Steph. We will move on to a public input. First person up is Wayne Williams. Wayne, would you state your city of residence, please?
Looks like I was on mute. Hi, I'm Wayne Williams. I am just wanting to comment on the proposed liquor license for Cracker Barrel. I live in the area and I am opposed to the liquor license for Cracker Barrel. Cracker Barrel has been around for over 50 years and they are just now wanting to sell beer and wine out of their restaurants. I think it's avid changes that it's a family style restaurant without beer and wine. Furthermore, Cracker Barrel, while they are getting better, has a, as a company, has a history of discrimination, racial discrimination, discrimination against LGBTQ populations and employment discrimination. So I would urge you all to oppose the liquor license for Cracker Barrel. Thank you.
Thank you for your input. The next person up is Tracy Chong. Would you play your, state your city of residence?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Why do I have to state my city of residence?
It's a question. You don't have to.
Maybe you should make it clear to the public.
Well, Mr. Williams didn't state his residence, so it's just a question.
Can you reset my timer?
Sure.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Tracy Chong. Did any of you watch the CPRB meeting and taser review last Wednesday on April 28? During this two taser reviews, Deputy Chief Sells admitted to rather serious misconduct by UPD officers, but proceeded to make light of the use of force and misconduct. During the review, three out of five board members found that there was inappropriate taser usage for one case. In this case, Sergeant Hurley tased an individual who did not match the suspect's description. What happened was that they saw a black male and regardless of description, he was automatically a suspect. Just like in the Alea Lewis incident where they stopped the juvenile that totally did not match the suspect's description. Meanwhile, to justify this, Deputy Chief Sells told board members that the suspect's clothing, weight and height was not specific and relative, even though from the mad cat call, it was pretty darn specific. Meanwhile, the UPD officers tased this individual who did not even match the suspect's description from the back as he was running. The UPD taser policy states that near flight is not a good cause for tasering an individual. There's so many reasons why a person might want to avoid the police, as mentioned by a board member, like fear, especially for a person of color. This is where de-escalation techniques should have been applied, but it was not even discussed. In this case, the taser usage form listed the reason for tasering as violent suspect and fighting suspect with gun. From the review, this could not be further from the truth. We should really start looking closer at the integrity of police reports and use of force reports, especially since the past council had placed quite a bit of weight on the use of force reviews and making a use of force review committee. But please keep in mind that if the reports themselves are dishonest, the review is already biased. Also, this is not a one-off incident. In the second taser case, multiple UPD officers wrote that the tased individual shoved an officer as the reason why he was tased. However, the video showed that it was actually a UPD officer who reaches his hand out to push or stop the individual, and that causes the individual to swat the officer's hand off. And within one second, he was tased without any warning. In this case, there was no reason to think that this person was armed. It was a domestic violence call. The taser reports also did not address why no warning was given. This is misconduct both in the tasering and also in the following report, as UPD taser policy states that a verbal warning of the intended use of the taser should precede its application, and that reasons it was not given shall be documented by the officer discharging the taser. Unfortunately, City Administrator Carol Mitten prohibited board members from voting on this review because it had been reviewed before. However, this does not seem right because only one minute of footage was provided in the initial review. And Deputy Chief Sells lied about not knowing if additional footage was available, even though it was so clear from three police reports that squad cam video had been put into evidence. When he produced a video 10 months later after the residents brought up this issue over and over again, this is where we see the misconduct and excessive use of force. Finally, one of the biggest concern was that an officer was running around with a taser and gun, one in each hand in the midst of residents. Sells acknowledged that this was wrong, but it was rather alarming to hear him trivialize it, saying something like, oh, I'm not happy about it. Even worse, after board members voted that there was indeed inappropriate use of the taser, Sells tried to make the issue into how the taser policy should be changed. The policy is correct. The policy finds the officers wrong. What should change is UPD's officers misconduct and how they should be held accountable. Can we talk about how we can fix this problem? Thank you.
Thank you for your input. The next person is Sarah Nixon. Can you state your city of residence?
Hello, City Council. This is Sarah Nixon. First of all, I would like to thank Ms. Tracy Chong for the comments she just made. She touched again, once again, she touched on so many important issues and I urge the city council not to allow her input to continue to be ignored and work with her and other city watchdogs who are bringing to your attention valuable information, data and issues. I would also like to thank Ms. Chong for questioning why the meeting chairs requiring members of the public to state their city of residence. I recall at a recent city council meeting, and I think it was last week, Alderman Miller asking Alderwoman Wu why she was doing this, why she was asking the public to state their their city or place of residence. And Ms. Wu, you responded and admitted that this is not required and disingenuously are denying or did last week denied that you were asking people to to state their place of residence. And yet here you are doing it again this evening. When it comes, and I believe we just heard you, you respond to Ms. Chong with the statement that, no, you're you're just merely suggesting it, but you're not. You know, grammar works in the following way. When you phrase or word a statement or a question with, will you, you know, beginning with, will you do this? That's actually not, there's no expectation that the person whom you're addressing will actually say no. So although it may look like a typical question, it isn't. In fact, it's a directive. And as Mr. Miller pointed out, you should actually be advising the public that they are not required to provide that that information. I'd like, myself, I would like to bring to your attention and to the council that there are members of the public who need to keep their place of residence confidential. There are members who come forward to provide input who are survivors of domestic violence. There are people for whom stalking is a reality. There are, in fact, some people who give you public input who are homeless and they don't have a place of residence to state. And I think it's it's unnecessary and inappropriate to emphasize that you wrongly are asking them to do this and requiring this. You risk imposing the stigma that comes along with those issues that I've just highlighted for you. I wouldn't want to see you making members of the public feel intimidated or ashamed of their status. Just, and those are just a few examples as to why it's inappropriate for you to be asking this. I would like to close also by mentioning that last week, at last week's city council, I had my hand up and I was passed over for comment. And I understand that I'm not the only person in that situation. So I would ask you to please pay attention and be very careful, have a careful look at who, at whether any hands are up before you move on to other agenda business. Thank you.
All right, the next person up is Christopher Hanson. Can you please state your city of residence?
Okay.
Yes.
Hi, well, it's nice to see all these new faces. That's really exciting. So welcome. It is a little unfortunate to see Ms. Wu exhibiting an interesting level of stubbornness. I'm pretty familiar with the open meetings. And there is no authority provided by the state to require or ask anyone about their city or state of residence. Someone could call from Argentina and you have to allow them to speak. It says any person can speak. So I don't know why you're doing this. I mean, it only serves to intimidate people. So I suggest you knock it off. You've had multiple determinations of open meetings act violations from the Illinois Attorney General. You're admitting defeat in open meetings act lawsuit now. Ms. Wu, you're being investigated by the IAG for open meetings act violations regarding public input at the electoral board meetings hearings last year. So I don't quite understand what you think you're doing, but stop it. Any of you who who are sitting on the council, anyone else can call a point of order anytime you want and bring the issue up right now and say, why are we asking people or requiring people to state their residence? Any one of you can do that if you think that's inappropriate. So on to some other content. I strongly urge you to listen to what Tracy Chong said about going back and looking at the recent CPRB meeting. In case it wasn't clear what they, what incident she was describing there, they did a taser review of a taser discharge. And what what happened in this situation was pretty simply was police were called in regards to someone having a gun, not not using it or anything. It was in their hand or something like that. The Urbana Police stopped someone who did not match the description in terms of height or weight or clothing color, including their shirt and pants. None of it matched. The only thing that matched was that they were black. They stopped this person in an apartment building. He wanted nothing to do with it, so he turned and tried to run. One of our officers shot him in the back with a taser gun and it failed. And so that officer continued to chase him, had his taser gun in one hand, pulled his service pistol with the other hand, and continued to run across a parking lot with one gun in each hand like a maniac. He actually ran past a mother pushing a stroller while doing this. That that was the, those are the basic details of that incident. I strongly urge you to go look at that review and ask why, actually, two of the CPRB members said said that this was proper taser usage. Even after our deputy chief even admitted that, you know, running with two guns in your hands is is a policy violation. It's right there in the policy. So I thought that was really interesting. And it kind of shows us that, you know, we're still failing, at least at an institutional level, within the Urbana Police Department to recognize misconduct. And it just shows how impossible it is for the police to recognize misconduct when they review themselves. I also think this council should look into the fact that Officer James Corey Coker has now been put in charge of reviewing police complaints with the CPRB. This is the same officer that was involved in the Alea Lewis arrest. He was the most senior officer involved. He saw nothing wrong with that situation. He was the one who was yelling at Alea Lewis, telling her to act like a lady and all of that. So I'm not sure if this is the person that the public would like to see placed in charge of reviewing police complaints. I'm not sure that encourages public trust in that process. I'm not sure there's any trust in that process to begin with, but it sure isn't getting any better if the officers whom we think are not acting appropriately are then put in charge of reviewing complaints against the Urbana Police Department. So once again, please, please, please go back and watch, watch that CPRB meeting that just happened. At least watch the taser review portion of it. And I think you'll start to see what the rest of us are seeing. Thank you. Good night.
All right. If anybody else wishes to address the Committee of the Whole, please raise your hand this time. All right, I don't see any other hands raised. Diane, I'm sorry, you needed to do the proclamation after the presentation, but you can do the proclamation now before we move on to the other items.
Thanks, Mary Alice. So this is a proclamation, whereas the Office of the Municipal Clerk, a time honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world and is the oldest among public servants. And whereas the Office of the Municipal Clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies and agencies of government at other levels. And whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering rendering equal service to all. And whereas the municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community. And whereas municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the Office of the Municipal Clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations. And whereas it's appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the Office of the Municipal Clerk. Now, therefore, I, Diane Wolf Marlin, Mayor of the City of Urbana, do hereby proclaim May 2nd through May 8th, 2021, as Municipal Clerks Week in the City of Urbana, Illinois. And we thank our local city clerk, Phyllis Clark, and her staff, and deputy clerk Wendy Hundley, and there's Assistant Kay Mihari. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next item is staff report. Do we have any staff reports tonight? I do not see any staff.
I have, I have. A couple of items to report. One is that we were notified last week from Congressman Ron Nate Davis's office that four local projects were included in the member designated project requests by the congressman. That's otherwise known as earmarks. One of those projects was in the city of Urbana. So we, he is requesting $1.7 million for repair of Springfield Avenue and Lincoln Avenue in Urbana. This is one of the streets in the worst conditions in our community, serves as the gateway to the community. And we're very grateful that that was included in the earmarks. This frees up capital funds to be used elsewhere in the city. So we're grateful for the $1.7 million. Also on that list was $9.8 million to the Champagne, Urbana Mass Transit District to buy hydrogen fuel cell buses, hybrid buses. $1 million to Willard Airport for improvements in their security screening area and $3.3 million to Savoy to help fund the Curtis Road grade separation between the railroad and the street. All four of these projects have direct benefits to our city, City of Urbana, plus the region as a whole. So we're grateful for these projects to be included in the earmarks. And I also wanted to let you know that Urbana Public Television has won two regional media awards at the Best of the Midwest Media Fest. This fest recognizes the best community access television programs in the Midwest. So for the City of Urbana, Nathan DeHan, Alex Aguilara, Brendan Jones, and Jake Hassan received a merit award in the entertainment category for media produced by college students for their program, Illini Drive. And then Elizabeth Hess and CU PhD Director Julie Pride received the Significant Community Program Award for their weekly interview series on the COVID-19 pandemic in the community. You probably have seen this program. This occurs every week since the pandemic started, and it's just a wonderful source of information for the public. Jason Liggett served as the production coordinator for both of these programs. So we thank him. We thank his staff. We thank members of the community who continue to provide outstanding public programming for our community. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Any other staff reports? No. All right. Next up are all of our resolutions and ordinance. So Resolution number 2021-0502-R 0020-R, Resolution Accepting a Grant from Community Foundation of East Central Illinois for Tree Planting, Public Works. Who is going to be presenting on that? Scott is.
Good evening. Welcome to New Counselors. My name is Scott Tess. I'm the Sustainability and Resilience Officer for the City of Urbana. The city has received an incredibly generous donation from an Urbana resident. And that donation is for expanding street tree planting in the city's rite of ways. This resolution will allow the city to accept that donation through the Community Foundation of East Central Illinois. Also on the call is City Arboretum's Kevin Sanderson, and the two of us are happy to take any questions you may have.
All right, questions for staff? Grace?
Thank you. I was wondering if it would be possible slash in the plan to include any food producing trees, like fruit and nut trees in this project?
I'll leave that to Kevin. He'll be selecting the trees. I'll leave that to Kevin. Uh he he'll be selecting the tree species.
And Kevin, since you're joining, sorry about that. Kevin, since you're joining us uh via phone, just be sure to press star six to unmute. Star six, and then you should be unmuted to address the council.
Can you hear me now?
Yep, we can hear you. Yes.
Okay, uh to answer that, Grace, we try to refrain from planting fruit trees in the right of way for just because of the litter and um uh the litter on the sidewalks can become a trip hazard if if it's a big fruit producing tree.
Yes. Are they all on the right of way? Or are there any, you know, larger spaces, corner spaces, anywhere that could um accommodate?
Uh mostly to be within the right of way and our right of ways are, you know, eight to 12 foot maximum width. So we're we're pretty limited to uh fruit bearing trees in the, in them areas.
All right, other questions? I had a couple of questions. Um I, it's a really exciting grant uh to be replacing 5% of the trees um that we need to be planting. Uh the website that you put up, uh urbana.mytreekeeper.com, unless I mistyped it multiple times, I don't think it's live. So I'm wondering if perhaps before the next city council meeting, if that could be looked into.
Uh I'll take a look.
Okay, great.
We've been using it, yeah.
My second question had to do with, um you have a map here. I'm wondering if you have a, if you have the ability to share that map with everybody.
Sure, I can screen share that from the agenda or from the, from the backend one moment.
So in that map of the areas uh in red are the areas that we're going to be looking to plant these trees, is that right?
Red and blue.
So what's the difference between the red and the blue?
So the blue is the community development target area that is established by community development, Urbana Community Development. And those are areas where they're taking raw census data and adding what we know about our community locally in terms of uh low income. So it's an attempt to make more accurate low income designated census zones. The red is established by the State of Illinois, through a process created in the uh Future Energy Jobs Act. And it's part of the uh the low income and environmental justice programming as part of the Illinois Solar For All Program, which is part of the State Future Energy Jobs Act. So they're they're similar, they're related, but um you know, we're looking at both of these, knowing that when you're slicing and dicing data, it's difficult to um, it's difficult to render what you're, what you're going after perfectly.
So I I guess I know that we have talked about equity within the city in terms of um resources, city services, and so forth. Has there been any assessment in these areas, in the red and the blue areas, in terms of equitable tree dispersment, I would call it?
Yeah, we we actually received a grant from uh from the Lumpkin Family Foundation. And we're uh working with a vendor right now who's doing some analysis on our street tree distribution and our vacant tree site distribution with respect to uh the the environmental justice zones and the community development target area zones. We don't have those results in yet.
Thank you. And I believe this is for three years. Is that three years out?
This, uh this, this grant for tree planting, we're uh, we're implementing over the course of three years, correct?
Any other questions for staff?
And I just want to show you real quick. This is the website, but it looks.
Maybe it was having problems loading earlier.
Yes, a little bit of a problem there too, but this is what it looks like generally.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Um at this time, I'll entertain a motion to uh for the recommendation on where to send this to city council. So the motion would be uh to move the item and you'd have to read the resolution number to city council with a recommendation for approval, a recommendation for no approval. Or uh it could also die, so.
I'd like to move that Resolution Number 2021 dash is the 05 dash 020-R. A resolution accepting a grant from the Community Foundation of East Central Illinois for tree planting be moved to uh be approved by the city council under consent agenda if possible.
All right, a second?
A second.
All right, moved by Sharice, seconded by Jeff. Is there any discussion? All right, Sharice?
Uh just one thing I wanted to say, what I noticed on the map too is that several of those trees are designated for my ward and I really appreciate that.
All right, with the clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans? Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkins?
Yes.
Mr. Quiz and Barry?
Yes.
All right, that motion passes. Um Resolution Number 2021-0502-R, Resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement for animal empowerment services from the executive office. Carol, are you presenting on this?
I am, and I'm joined by Lieutenant Matt Bain in the event that you have specific questions about this, but this is a, this is an intergovernmental agreement with the county for them to provide animal empowerment services for the city. And they had actually asked us to sign this some time ago and it just got lost in the shuffle. But the, um I provided you both the the proposed updated intergovernmental agreement as well as the last one, in case you wanted to, in case you wanted to see um any of the changes, but I've highlighted the the um, the most significant changes in the memo to you all. And um those changes were uh occasioned by um a, a huge influx of animals at one time from um Champagne. They had a, they had seized a bunch of animals after um, after, from a hoarder. And that, that was, that caused this, what they're calling an extraordinary, extraordinary event, which put a lot of stress on them. And so they, they wanted to build in some safeguards into the I G A for um any future such um occurrences. So um, so that's, th- those are the main changes to the, to the I G A. I would say that we have um a good relationship with the uh folks from the county who provide this service for us. As I mentioned in the memo, we provide, unlike other jurisdictions in in the county, we have our own animal warden or animal control officer. So um this is an essential service for us uh because we need a place to take the animals. And um looking forward to um getting this finalized and um, like I said, Lieutenant Bain is here if you have any specific questions.
All right, questions for staff. Sharice?
Hi, um Matt, this, I was wondering when I was reading this, is this just regarding like animals that are found, like dogs or cats that are, that seem to be feral, running in packs or something like that? Or does it also include, for example, last year we had a possum in our garage and I had to call animal control and get the possum out? Does it include like, you know, wildlife animals and you just put them someplace before you take them out to the woods or whatever?
No, this would just be for domestic animals.
Okay.
Jeff?
I have a, a question and a comment. Um the comment's really simple, just that there's a typo on the top of page four. It says maybe instead of may be. Um so there's just one, one little thing, but then the, my, my question is, I noticed between the two versions, the definition of veterinary services changed. Um so the older version specifically includes spays and neuters and the new version doesn't. And I just wanted clarification on that to make sure that it's not going to end up with the city now paying for the cost of spays and neuters if it wasn't previously, because most animals that go to the uh shelter would end up being spayed or neutered. And that's on uh page one for both versions.
Do you know the answer to that, Matt? Because if not, we can get the answer.
I, I don't. I don't think that we have, at least, I don't think that we have ever been charged for that service, um but I I can, I can double check.
Yeah, I just am curious why it was changed, why it was taken out of the newer version, just to make sure.
I don't know, and I didn't notice that, so um I'll look into it. I'll get you the answer.
We can get you the answer to that before you vote, uh take a final vote next week.
Thank you.
All right, other questions for staff? Okay, I had a couple of questions. Uh my first question is, I, you just said, Matt, that this is only for domestic animals, and I know it specifically says it uh does not pertain to exotic or dangerous animals. So what is, what does the city do if there are exotic or dangerous animals?
So we had an incident um like that about two years ago where there were several, um it was another hoarding situation. And they had several exotic birds and county animal control is not equipped to um to house and care for animals such as that. Um I I would, I would also assume things like snakes and uh maybe some, some uh amphibious creatures. I don't, they're just not equipped for that. So we go to an outside agency. There was actually an exotic bird rescue. I can't remember exactly where it was, but it was about 45 minutes away that that's where the animals were brought for the time being.
Okay.
So anything, anything that county can't house, um they just don't have the means or the setup for. There's, there's all kinds of rescues and Amy Anderson, our, our um animal control officer is very very in tune with, with those and aware of those. And so that's what, that's what we generally do. It doesn't happen very much, but that's generally what we go to.
Okay, all right. My, my second question had to do with uh extraordinary event. I was looking at this and I couldn't, can you direct me to where that is in this agreement?
Just a minute here.
It's on.
Do you know where it is?
On page three, under section four.
Under equipment?
Yes.
It's under equipment.
Yeah, it says the county shall maintain separate cages for animals and different species. And it discusses, ki- kind of discusses, um for example, if, if there were the, if there are more than so many animals and they aren't capable of housing them.
I wouldn't expect that to be under equipment, but thank you for showing that. I appreciate that.
Roll for me.
I, I, I'm sorry. Oh, Phyllis is asking question. Um and then my third question is, so we pay the county 88 cents per capita? So what do we, for, for this service? What is that total amount?
No, the, this agreement here is, is not what we pay annually to have their service. There's actually two agreements. So this, this one is just the three main things that were um highlighted in the uh memo are the, are what's being changed here. That per capita is a, a different contract.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Grace?
Question is, I was wondering about the part of the city's responsibility to house excess animals and what the plan is for that.
Do you mean in the event of an extraordinary event?
Yes. Then what is the city's plan for housing those animals?
So county will house them. They just want to be notified beforehand instead. The event that happened, what the, the event that happened that led up to this change was officers are just showing up. And they were not prepared. Um they will be, it will be on them to do. But they just are asking for advance notice and we don't just show up with 80 dogs from the hoarder's house or something. They might have to reach out to the Humane Society or other rescues or or some other kind of places, depending on the number, which again are very, very rare. But that was um, that's my understanding.
The second point there says that it's the city's responsibility to find housing for animals in excess of the county's capacity associated with that extraordinary.
So I, I, I suppose we'll have to, we'll have, hopefully we'll never have a, a case where we're bringing 80 dogs in. Again, Amy is um our animal control officer. She's very in tune with local rescues, um local places to house, to house things. So if it, if it became an incident where we would go above what county is capable of doing, we would look to these outside agencies and rescues and things like that.
Yeah, I would love to see that, you know, item. I know it could change, but maybe at least have some kind of a agreement beforehand with the Humane Society or whatever those rescues might be, just so that there is a plan if that happens, because um the chances are it won't be expected when it does happen.
Yeah, it's very possible. Sometimes we do know about it and have an idea um of the number of animals and those arrangements can be made ahead of time. I'm not sure the exact number of um animals that the county can hold, so I don't know what, you know, if we get over 30 or 40, I I could find that out too. Yes, we have to let them know if we're bringing in more than three, but what is their max? And I can find that out too.
I think, if I could just interject, I think there's sort of a dynamic quality to this too, which is the, 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 the population fluctuates, right? And and that's true of any shelter, that's true of the county um empowerment and so forth. And I think if we actually had a situation like this, we would be collaborating on where to put the animals.
Yes, definitely. I would just love to see at least some kind of tentative plan that the Humane Society or some rescues are willing to help with this overflow if the city is going to take that on.
All right. Jeff, you had your hand up earlier. Did you mean to put it down?
I, I was just going to raise the same point that Grace did, that it specifically does say that the city is responsible, and I would echo that. I would like to see a plan in place for what would happen in a case like that.
All right. James? You're muted.
Notice in the background, um and I remember this from my time on the county board, that um Urbana is the only jurisdiction that has their own um animal control warden. And uh I'm guessing, but I would like you to clarify this, that that's because the cost at which the county would charge for that service, we do it ourselves at a, at a lower rate.
I'll, I'll take it first, Matt, and then you can, you can clean up anything that I I don't get right. So we, we talked about this a couple of times, or I talked about this a couple of times with the, with the chief. And I think what it is, it's, it's, it's a combination of we, if we hire somebody as our animal control officer, we use that person for more than just animal control. So we get more out of that. I think uh every five years or so, on, on average, we, we take a look at the numbers again and see if that still makes sense for us. Um and, and so that's something that we may be looking at again, you know, um who knows, but um for now, you know, we, uh I think, I think Amy Anderson also does um Orange Hat Patrol, as she coordinates that. I know she helps with evidence um from time to time, and there, and there may be other things that she does in terms of community outreach. Lieutenant Bain probably knows that, but, but it's, it's not a straight one for one, because it's not a, it's not a full-time animal control function.
Yeah, that's right. She does a lot of other um duties within the police department, especially in the administrative part. She goes into schools and does presentations for kids with animal safety and bike safety. She is the backup fingerprinting person at the police department. Uh she does help with evidence. She is involved with neighborhood watches. So she does, she does a variety of things other than just animal control, so.
Thanks.
All right, Grace?
Thank you. Um I had other questions about the euthanasia with Order of Destruction on page four. And it seems like, I can't pinpoint what it was, but I know there's been some issues locally with kind of premature euthanasia of someone's pet before it was picked up. And just kind of wondering how that works and how it's the court or city legal division that's the one to make that decision? Yeah, just kind of curious how that works.
Matt, you want me to first, and then you can?
Okay.
Okay. So the decision about, there's a, there's a point at which the animal is no longer the property of the city, and the animal becomes property of the county. And they may, and, and this, I will turn to Matt to explain, because he knows it in much greater detail. They go through a protocol to determine whether the animal is adoptable. And then they, they decide whether it needs to be euthanized. And so now, Matt, if you would just kind of just hit the highlights of what that protocol looks like.
Sure. So I actually recently went out to county animal control and spoke with the director, Stephanie Joss, and she explained her process. Essentially, an evaluation on whether they are going to recommend an animal that has been turned over to them for adoption, or if it is going to need to be put down. She documented, we did speak a little bit about the, the latest incident that happened in December over there where the mistake was made. I believe that it was an isolated event. Some corrections have been made and things have been changed. So I am satisfied with what I saw as to their process and record-keeping of such.
Makes that decision about a pet being adoptable or not, that's at the county facility?
Yes.
County makes the decision.
County makes the decision, and the director out there, her name is Stephanie Joss, J-O-O-S.
I'm just confused why in the, on that page four, it says issuance from court or city legal division for written consent for an order of destruction. Do they have to then go through?
I, what they're talking about there is there can be cases that go through court that deem an animal dangerous, and therefore it's going to be euthanized. So I think that those specific events, short of a court order, Stephanie does her evaluation. If they get a court order for a particular animal, then that's what that is referring to.
Actually, Matt, I think it's, I think it's when there's a hold order. So if you look under section seven, it's once there's been a hold order issued. And then it has to be released.
I think not very clear in there, and I think it would be good to just clarify who or what entity makes that kind of decision, under what grounds.
Well, just to clarify, the, the, the routine decision about whether to euthanize an animal is made by the county.
I just didn't see any reference to that in this. If there is some, please let me know.
There, there, there is a, there is a section that says that after the days.
Yeah, it's, it's transfer of ownership. It's on, it's on the bottom of page four. And there's, there's time limits for various things, and then it says after those ti, after those various time limits, the, the animals become property of the county. And then the, later in that paragraph, the county is thereafter authorized to sell, adopt, out, convey, euthanize, or otherwise dispose of the animal in whatever manner it deems appropriate. The county accepts sole responsibility for its discretionary decision.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions for staff? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I would motion to, this is to recommend to council, right? And with a, I don't know, a change, maybe, to look into what those places would be in the extraordinary event that the city is responsible for housing these animals? I'd like to just have some options of some organizations that are at least possibilities and remotely willing to take that on. So I guess.
So there's, there's, there's two things you could, you could say with no recommendation. So I move to have this sent to city council with no recommendation. And you, we can ask staff to provide the additional information, if you would like to make that motion.
Yes, I would like to recommend with that additional, additional information.
Okay, I just want to be clear. So the motion is whether, where it's going and what the, what it is approved for, but then we have direction to staff in terms of what we would like to see in addition. Carol?
To the extent that this would be helpful, I, I think we can get you the additional information. I don't see it being captured in the IGA, because it's a separate issue. It's between, it's, it's our responsibility. It will, it will not be memorialized in the IGA, so we're happy to provide that information. But you needn't tie it up with the, with the IGA unless you feel compelled to do that.
So right now, Grace, let's clarify your motion before we move on.
I know if Jay wanted to add something that might help clarify the motion.
I mean, this is a side note, but I think for me, at least in terms of a recommendation, we need clarification on this bay neuter language as well. Just was gonna add that in.
Okay, so I guess my recommendation would be either to hold it in committee or to send it to city council with no recommendation. That, as, as chair, those are the two options that I would suggest from council. Sharice?
I just want to say something. So Grace, when you make, when you make the motion, you say the entire resolution, I had to learn this, too. You say the entire motion, like the resolution number, da, 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 and then you add your amendments or, or something like that, and you can say you would like to, to keep it in committee, or you can move it to, for city council with no recommendation or, or something like that. But you can keep it in committee for further discussion if you want. You understand? So you can repeat, you can, like, say your, say, say that your motion again, I move that resolution, da, 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 da. And then say what you want.
With it now, because now I'm not even certain. I'm, I'm. I don't know.
I get it, too. I get it. I understand. I totally get it. Okay, you want me to, well, I can try to do it, and you can tell me if I'm, if I'm saying it correctly. Is that okay?
Thank you.
Okay, I would like to make a, a motion for a resolution number twenty twenty-one dash zero five dash zero two one R. A resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement for animal impoundment services to be, to stay in committee for further discussion until we have further information regarding the, the two issues that Grace and Jayah discussed earlier.
I'll second that. Made it easy for.
All right, so, so that, that motion is to keep this into committee. It was moved by Sharice, and it was seconded by Grace. Is there any discussion on that motion? James?
Yeah, it seems like that, looking for some additional information on two, two parts, the, the spaying, I understand, because it's core to it. But the plan for housing animals is, is our own thing to resolve. It feels like that information and those things could be clarified by our city council meeting. So by making this choice that we're making to keep it in committee, it will not be done for three weeks. So the information that we're looking for and the clarification that we're looking for really feels like a one-week possible kind of thing. If we get to council and it's not satisfactory, we can send it back to committee. That's an option, too. But by, by choosing not to keep it in the committee, it'll be two weeks before we talk about it again, and then it'll be another week before it could be acted on in city council. So I, I would prefer that we go ahead and send it without recommendation and see if it can get resolved for the city council meeting.
Other discussion?
I'm okay with that.
So Sharice, would you like to amend your motion?
I'd like to amend the motion to moving the resolution number twenty twenty-one dash zero five dash zero two one R forward to city council with no recommendation pending information regarding spade and neutering in particular, and the issues regarding housing, according to Grace.
Grace, do you accept that change?
Uh, yes, and I'll second if I need to.
Okay, all right. So we have a new motion on the floor to send this with no recommendation, but to send it forward to city council. Is there further discussion? All right, well, the clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkins?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
All right, that moves forward to city council. The next item is ordinance number twenty twenty-one zero five zero one five, an ordinance approving a final subdivision plat for South Ridge Eight subdivision, plan case number twenty-four eighteen S twenty-one. And I believe Kat is presenting on this.
Yes, hi, everyone. This is a request by Carl Hill and H. Allen Dooley for approval of a final plat and requested waiver for South Ridge Eight subdivision. Prior to the plan commission on May, oh, man, not sure, or April twenty-second, sorry. Staff received two letters of public input. They were both included in your packet. And at that meeting, the plan commission voted unanimously to forward the proposed final plat and requested waiver to city council with a recommendation of approval. Staff concurs. This is a location map of the property. It was part of the Douglas Farm that was annexed into the city in two thousand and one. It is in the South Ridge neighborhood located south of Windsor Road and east of Philo Road, south of the Pines Shopping Center. The property is L-shaped, but only the east-west portion of the lot is included in the proposed final plat. And the proposed plat would subdivide the six-point-three-two acre tract into twenty-seven lots to be developed as single-family homes. This is a zoning map of the property. It is zoned R-two, single-family residential. And there is R-two zoning and R-three zoning to the north and east, and county agricultural zoning and uses to the south and west. The proposed subdivision is consistent with the requirements of the R-two zoning district, and it would allow for the continuation of existing residential uses on the south side of Urbana. This is a future land use map. The comprehensive plan shows this area as residential suburban pattern, and the proposed subdivision would be consistent with that designation. As I said before, the lot will be subdivided into twenty-seven lots on the north and south sides of the extended Hillshire Drive. The proposed subdivision does not require a traffic impact analysis, and the city engineer does not anticipate any access or congestion issues. The applicants have requested a waiver to allow Hillshire Drive to be paved to a width of twenty-eight feet, or a minimum width of thirty-one feet is required. This would match the width of Hillshire Drive and all existing streets in the neighborhood, as a waiver was, was received for South Ridge Five, Six, and Seven when they were platted. The waiver request also includes a condition that street parking will only be permitted on the south side of Hillshire Drive, and that is to allow more room for emergency access. This is a screenshot of the proposed final plat. It is consistent with a preliminary plat that was, that was approved by a plan commission in plan case twenty-four eighteen S twenty-one. The proposed final plat is also consistent with the zoning designation and the comprehensive plan, future land use for this land. The plat also meets the minimum requirements of the Urbana subdivision and land development code, with the exception of the one requested waiver. And the requested waiver would not be harmful to other properties or negatively impact the health and safety of the community. So the city council has the following options in this case: approve the proposed final plat, including the requested waiver; approve the proposed final plat and deny the requested waiver; or deny the proposed final plat, and if so, please state reasons for denial. As I stated earlier, the plan commission voted unanimously to approve the preliminary plat and to forward the final plat and requested waiver to city council with a recommendation of approval. Staff concurs, and I can take any questions for staff. Carl Hill is also here as the applicant and can make a statement as the developer.
All right, questions for Kat? See, James?
Yeah, I guess, I guess my first question is, I saw in the plan commission discussion that it was asked why Hillshire Drive isn't connected to Philo Road for this phase of the development, and I, I'd really like to understand why not, because this is becoming a, a kind of a corner with only two entrances to it, and can, can, was there a logical reason why they wouldn't go ahead and connect Hillshire Drive at this time?
Yes, so, and I'll let Carl elaborate on that. He's available as well. But from a staff perspective and through conversations with the applicant, they're planning to connect Hillshire Drive to Philo Road with South Ridge Nine, which should be platted within the next year or so. But for this point in time, they're developing on the north and south sides of Hillshire Drive and not extending past that east-west strip into the northwest strip of that L-shaped piece of land. So it doesn't make sense for them to connect Hillshire Drive at this point in time without plating that land as well. So they're only proposing Hillshire Drive extension to this point, but with South Ridge Nine, they will plan to connect Hillshire Drive to Philo Road.
So do we have some kind of commitment? I, I know the developers here, we have some kind of commitment that that will follow along fairly quickly?
I believe that those are their plans, and like I said, Carl can make a statement on that as well, but South Ridge Nine is certainly in the pipeline.
Carl, are you able to comment on that?
Yes, are you ready for me?
Yes.
Okay, now, do you want just the information that you're asking at the moment, or do you want a quick history of what we have and why we're going final plat, as well as the preliminary plat?
Let's start with a question, and then we'll go back, circle back.
Okay, we have people, right now, we've used all the lots, and I have a builder that needs more lots immediately. And if I include the entrance or the exit to Philo Road, it's going to add quite a bit of time because of the engineering and some of the issues that we have to deal with, as far as water mains and bike trails. So we decided to stop where we are so that we could have these lots available, hopefully by September, October. And then the plan is to go ahead and start, and while we're start the ninth phase as far as the design and development, because we have issues that we want to speak with the city regarding.
All right.
Okay, I did have another question. This is regarding the waiver. I did, I did some looking at the existing Hillshire Drive. And I, and you mentioned, Kat, that it was a, that it was done at twenty-eight feet, but it, it doesn't look like that. It looks like it is the thirty-one feet.
It is twenty-eight.
Well, the other question I have is, of course, my ridge is thirty-one feet, it looks like, through this, through this. This, if, if this does get connected to Philo Road, it will be a, an alternate entrance, a feeder into this area, and that would make me not, not as quick to approve a waiver to make this a narrower road, because it's going to be a feeder for the subdivision.
Yeah, that's the same question that came up at the plan commission. It's also the same question that we answered in two thousand and one, when we provided the preliminary plat for the whole sixty acres. They decided that Hillshire would be a local collector, and because of being residential in nature as it is, a narrower road would slow traffic down and also provide more grass for water to be absorbed to, rather than providing more runoff. We have Trails Drive just to the north, which is thirty-three feet, and that is going to be the main collector, we might say, for the east-west. And that's why Hillshire Drive was given that waiver, because they thought it was not a good plan.
I have a few comments on behalf of staff as well. One of the reasons staff supported this waiver Um, one of the reasons staff supported this waiver was to encourage slow, uh, vehicle speeds through a residential neighborhood. Um, typically, you see that with narrower roads, um, cars don't travel as fast, they don't feel, um, you know, as safe to travel as fast on narrower roads, especially in residential areas. Um, just additionally, the city engineer did review this, and we've had multiple conversations about the waiver request. Um, and street pavement with, in this area, and he is in support of the waiver as well.
James, does that answer your question? All right, Grace?
Um, my question was about that water runoff, and it looks like there's no plan for, um, a need for additional stuff, because the stormwater system was already kind of put in for this whole big picture project.
Right.
That, um, and I just wanted to say, because this is six, and looking through the public comments, a lot of people did have concerns about water there with this new development. Um, and especially that area, once you go back behind, you know, the big open spot, there's a lot of kind of differences with height and the way water flows back there. Um, so I just wanted to, um,
We resolved all those issues in twenty oh one, when we did the main plat, and we came up with all of the water runoff calculations, and we determined that we were a little over the requirement with our retention cells.
And as far as the runoff and the road, um, did you look into any permeable or semi-permeable paving so that you could have?
No, definitely not. Those do not hold up under traffic. So what we're doing is we have storm sewers that run the water to the retention cells. And they were developed that way to not cause a problem for the occupants. We've designed the lots and the grading of every lot so that the water on each lot goes to the street, it doesn't go to a neighbor. So the only, in fact, when we, uh, did the retention cells, we buried two thousand feet of pipe so that the farmer that is to the east of us would not have to deal with water runoff coming out of the retention cell. So he is now drier than he was typically before we did our development.
All right, other questions for Kat or for Carl? Okay, with that, I'll, um, take a motion if somebody's willing to give a motion.
Actually, Mary Alice, I believe Mr. Hill wanted to kind of present more generally, perhaps I misheard, but just wanted to give him that opportunity.
You wanted to give us some more historical information, Carl?
First of all, I'd like to welcome the council people. It's been ten years since our last phase. And ten years since I've visited, uh, the council chambers. So the new members, welcome. Uh, it's exciting, as you found out tonight. When I restarted, uh, Myra Ridge back in nineteen eighty-eight, uh, I took over forty-seven acres from Thompson Number Company, who gave it up. And, uh, I worked with the park district, and we put in thirteen acres of park and lots of bike trail. Back, uh, at this point, we have over three thou- almost four thousand lineal feet of ten-foot wide bike trails. We have almost twenty acres of park that we put in the, the sections one, uh, South Ridge one through eight so far, and we have one more section nine to do, which will finish out that sixty acres. Uh, we have approximately a hundred and eighty-nine units in this sixty acres. We had a hundred and forty-five in the previous forty-seven acres. Uh, those amounted to about a third of an acre per lot. Uh, when you look at the number of acreage, uh, with the number of, uh, housing units that were there. Uh, we have smaller lots. We designed these lots so that people wouldn't have to spend the whole weekend, uh, taking care of the yard. So we have people that just wanted a nice place to live and not have a large lot. So that's why we have the twenty acres, and that's why we have, uh, the four thousand feet of bike trails, to give plenty of space. Um, we have a lot of east-west oriented streets so that we can take advantage of solar. I built a lot of solar homes, uh, previously even starting this section and became very conscious of the energy efficiency requirements that we would be needing in the future. I planted about two hundred trees over the years myself. Uh, I've not bothered the arborist with trying to get trees started, uh, information I give to the buyers of the properties. And then they can have the lot, the trees put on their property. Um, I lived in the subdivision from nineteen ninety-three to twenty thirteen in three different houses. Uh, we've tried to make it a place where people can have, uh, pride of ownership, take part of ownership. And me and other residents of the subdivision have been able to help others uh, with their fences, with their trees, with whatever, to keep the subdivision looking good. Uh, we're very proud of the area. If you haven't been out there, I would say go out and visit, but be careful burning dry, because we have seven houses under construction there right now. And we have a few more around the corner. But last year and this year, we've had a, uh, demand like we've never seen. We sold fifteen lots last year, and it looks like we're doing twenty or twenty-five this year, which is the reason we ran out of lots, and which is the reason we're trying very hard to get this done quickly, so the people that want these homes can get them built. Uh, so that's, that's in a nutshell.
Thank you. Grace, do you have another question?
Uh, yes, I was just wondering if you could tell us a little bit more about the energy efficiency and kind of looking towards future codes and standards, uh, with this particular part of the project.
Oh, I am, I'm not a contractor anymore as far as building. Uh, I'm trying to retire. I'm seventy-five years old, and I'm just selling lots, and I'm trying to bring in builders to build my homes. Uh, the standards that we build to are the national standards. Uh, the, the builders that come in there and build the homes, uh, just have to follow those, and they have to get permits from the city. And they have to show that the city, show the city inspectors that they are building, uh, energy-efficient homes.
All right, other questions? Okay, can I have a motion? Shandra, do you like to give a motion?
Yes, I move that ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash zero five dash zero one five. An ordinance approving a final subdivision plat, South Ridge eight subdivision, um, be sent to city council for final.
Recommendation for approval?
Recommendation for approval.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right, moved by Shandra and seconded by Sharice. Any discussion? Jaya?
I just have a, a quick comment from listening to the plan commission, and I don't know if this is the right time to bring it up. I, I do think that this has been really thoughtful, and I appreciate the, the reasoning behind the waiver. But a number of residents brought up concerns about trash and noise violations. So if we could make sure that that information about how to address that is provided to our residents as this construction continues, I think that would be important, but I have no, no concerns about moving forward.
And then I, uh, had a question for staff. Usually you provide the plan commission draft minutes. And if you can provide those by the next meeting, that would be helpful.
Absolutely, I'll make sure they're here.
Thank you. All right, is there any discussion before we take the vote? Now, the clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkins?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
All right, that moves forward to city council. Thank you very much.
Thank you, folks.
All right, the next one is ordinance number twenty twenty-one zero five zero one six. An ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter Three, Section Three hyphen forty-three, for increasing the number of class R and T one liquor licenses for Satar Indian Cuisine INC. I don't know what DBA means.
Doing business as.
Is.
Oh, no, at one fourteen South Ray Street in Urbana, the mayor.
I'll speak to this one, and the next item on the agenda, there's two liquor licenses. So the other item on the agenda is ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash zero five dash zero one seven, which is an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter Three, Section Three dash forty-three, increasing the number of class R and T two liquor licenses for CBOCS West Inc. Doing Business as Cracker Barrel Old Country Store, number one twenty-nine, at twenty-one oh one North Kenyon Road. So I'll be wearing my, uh, uh, local liquor control commissioner hat for these two items. Um, as you may know, the city of Urbana doesn't cap numbers of liquor licenses for any particular category, like some cities. Each time we have an applicant for a new liquor license or a change in the type of license, it comes before city council. So in this case, we have applications, they actually are for two new liquor licenses. The first for Satar Indian Cuisine for the Tres Nopales Restaurant, which is on South Ray Street, formerly was the Satar Indian Restaurant, you may remember that. They have applied for a R and T one license. And this is for selling all types of alcoholic liquor, so beer, wine, and mixed drinks. If you haven't had a chance, and I'm sure you've done all your readings so far, but if you wanted to go to Urbana City Code, Chapter Three, Urbana City Code was completely rewritten, um, and approved last February. We, uh, we, we started from scratch, rewrote the liquor code to really adapt it to how businesses wanted to do business today and to meet the needs of the, uh, license holders and really of the community. So the new categories from that rewriting of the code, we included the R and T license for R and T one and R and T two. So the Tres Nopales are applying for R and T one, which is the sale of all alcoholic liquor. Um, for the Cracker Barrel store, this is a new license for them. They're applying for R and T two. And that is for a license for beer and wine sales only. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for the mayor? James?
Yeah, I assume R and T is restaurant and tavern?
Restaurant and tavern, yes.
And, um, I, so if this is Satar doing business as a Mexican restaurant now, didn't they have a liquor license previously?
Yes, but this is a new business, so.
Okay, so that, that license is gone?
Yes, Satar no longer exists as a, uh, business entity as far as we know, but they're applying under, uh, the, uh, Tres Nopales.
So the numbers we see here now already reflect that that license went away when Satar, she stopped writing?
Correct, yeah. So what you'll see, and I'm, I should have explained that, so on the left in that chart is classification, those are the different liquor license categories. And then, um, under the right-hand column, it's the number of licenses authorized. And each time you approve a license, that will increase. If a, uh, company goes out of business, then that number decreases.
All right, other questions for the mayor? Shandra?
Yes, so it's for Cracker Barrel, is that beer and wine to be consumed on the premise? And if in the future they would want to expand that liquor license, do they have the opportunity? Or do they have to reapply and go through this process again?
It, it is, is for on, on-premise consumption, um, currently. And yes, if they wanted to expand to the sale of all liquors, they would have to come back to council.
All right, if, uh, there are no other questions, um, there were two items. We'll have to take, uh, each resolution, sorry, each ordinance, uh, separate, a separate motion for each one. So if somebody would like to make a motion.
I can give it a try.
All right, Jaya.
Um, I'll move to, I don't, actually, I don't know how to do this.
So if you would like to move, if, yeah, you need to read out the, the whole statement, and then after that, then you say, I move to send this to city council with a recommendation for approval, no recommendation, but.
Okay, so I'll move ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash zero five dash zero one six. An ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter Three, Section Three dash forty-three. Do I have to read the rest of it?
Yeah.
Okay, increasing number of class R and T dash one liquor licenses for Satar Indian Cuisine Inc., DBA Tres Nopales, one fourteen South Ray Street, Urbana, Illinois, um, on to city council for approval?
Yep.
Weather of recommendation for approval.
There you go.
Getting there.
All right, moved by Jaya, seconded by Sharice. Any discussion? No, well, the clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkins?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
All right, that moves on to city council. The, uh, next ordinance on the docket. Would anybody like to make a motion for ordinance zero one seven? Who else is feeling brave? James, you've unmuted yourself. Would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try this out. Um, I'd make a motion for ordinance number two zero two one zero five zero one seven, an ordinance amending your Urbana City Code, Chapter Three, Section Three dash forty-three, increasing the number R and T two liquor licenses for Seabox West Incorporated, doing business as Cracker Barrel Old Country Store, number one twenty-nine, at twenty-one oh one North Kenyon Road in Urbana, Illinois. I move this to council with recommendation for approval.
All right, is there a second?
A second.
All right, so moved by James, seconded by Shandra. Any discussion?
Uh, yes.
Uh, Grace?
Um, uh, not sure about this one. I, you know, definitely heard and took in the comment, um, in our public comments about the issues with Cracker Barrel and the opposition to this, with it being a family restaurant, having a history of racial discrimination, and then also, I think, being right there on the interstate on one of our most treacherous interstates. I mean, my, I believe that seventy-four there is, you know, the high, highest traffic, um, accident incidents that we have. And, um, so I would be down for not approving this one for those reasons. Just wanted to express that.
All right, any other discussion? Diane?
I could respond if that's appropriate.
Sure.
Couple of things. One is we have several other restaurants holding, um, liquor licenses in that area. Hickory River is one, um, the Mexican restaurant up in North Cunningham is another. So there are a number of restaurants very close to the interstate, holding liquor licenses. Number two, we haven't had complaints about Cracker Barrel, about the local Cracker Barrel restaurant as far as discrimination. If there was complaints to be filed, it could be done with our human rights or, uh, officer soon to be hired, I might say. Um, so as far as the record of the local store, we haven't had a history of complaints. I can't speak to, um, the national, but we do have a number of other restaurants very close to the interstate. And three, I would point out just in general, um, and when you start to get into the budget, you'll be seeing is our revenue from sales, food and beverage tax and liquor tax is a very important part of our budget. And interestingly, Cracker Barrel kind of flies under the radar. Uh, we don't, you know, think of it as being a local, well, you know, it's a national chain, so it's not a locally owned Urbana restaurant. But they perform very well as far as generating revenue for the city, which we need to support our core services and programs in the city. So, um, they've been a very good corporate citizen here in the city of Urbana. For that reason, um, we do recommend that we do ask that you support this. Um, that, that said, we always do say a liquor license is a privilege, not a right. And if there are issues related to any of the individual liquor license holders, and sometimes we've had that, then we take those, then we deal with those cases on an individual basis.
All right, Diane, I have a question. Is, I'm not sure if Urbana Garden serves, uh, meals past breakfast and lunch. But if they do, do they have a liquor license?
Uh, they do serve dinner. I, I have offhand, I am not sure they're one of our holders. Um, I, that brings up another point. Deputy Liquor Commissioner is my assistant Kate Levy, and she would be able to answer that question on the spot, but I believe, actually, I believe they do, now that I think about it. Yes, they do hold a liquor license.
Yeah, I think they just do beer and wine.
Yeah.
Um, okay.
So again, this, this restaurant is asking for beer and wine, not hard alcohol.
Great.
Yeah, I just, I just wanna say, and I, and I take Wayne's, uh, comment also in, into consideration. But, um, I've been a customer at Cracker Barrel. But, um, I've been a customer at Cracker Barrel several times. Not so much since the pandemic, but, um, what, I've never had any issues racially or anything else. They, they're, uh, several African-American, not just servers, but people that are hostessing, managers, uh, that's one thing I've noticed. And I do notice those things when I go into any restaurant, having been a server and having been a hostess and having worked in that, that particular, uh, field. I've never gotten any, I've never had any issue at all with, with, uh, their service. I, uh, uh, there have been several African-American patrons that I've known that we have, you know, bumped into while, while there. A bunch of us not eating together, but just happened to be seeing each other. So, um, I've not had those issues. Now, what their national chain does, um, I'm not privy to. I don't, I don't have that information. But I would say that, uh, the local Cracker Barrel has always been, uh, uh, very good in to, in, in dealing with, uh, the community from my perspective. I can only say from my perspective. And that's it.
Grace?
I just had a quick question about the timing of the liquor sales, just in general, and with this R and T two, if there's a timing of sales, like, is it after a certain time in the evening? Or like, if they're open at six o'clock in the morning for breakfast, do alcohol sales start then?
As, as, each individual restaurant is free to set their hours for alcohol sales. I'm kind of doubting they're gonna sell, sell alcohol at breakfast. We do have, um, the latest they can sell alcohols, any establishment can sell alcohol is two AM and not before six AM. That's state law, but I do not know there's particular store hours.
So that's up to the restaurant outside of that two AM?
Yeah.
Chandra?
So I, I lived on, I live on this end of town near Cracker Barrel. And the only concern that I can think of about having, um, an establishment that serves liquor on this end would be that sort of windy curve coming around. And there's like no stop sign before the light on Kenyon. And again, I pass through this little intersection all the time. So I'm wondering if there has been sort of maybe like a traffic study, about adding a stop sign there? And especially if this restaurant would get a liquor license, that may increase, um, visitation to the restaurant. Um, and also, of course, increased beverage consumption. So that's just, um, something that I thought of that could be a concern.
Diane, do you wanna respond to that?
Um, well, we haven't done a traffic study. I could say if, if it becomes an issue, that, that could be something we would do. But at this point, um, you know, we haven't, uh, we have not done a traffic study related to the liquor license.
I have seen numerous number of accidents at this sort of intersection at Kenyon and Cunningham. And so, I mean, I would rather, this may not be the right form for that, but rather be proactive than reactive if something happens. So, um, I'd love to talk with whoever the proper person would be about maybe doing a traffic study and see how a stop sign will be effective there.
Sure, okay, that, that, in that case, that would be the traffic commission. So a concern like that would go to the traffic commission.
Thank you.
The engineers would consider that, yeah.
All right, any further discussion? All right, I believe, was it, uh, James, did you move that forward? Is that right?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, thank you. And then who's seconded? Sharice, did you second that?
Chandra.
Chandra, I'm sorry, I, I didn't take notes. All right, um, so the motion on the floor right now is to send this to city council with a recommendation for approval. Will this clerk please call the roll?
Okay, Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkins?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
All right, that motion carries, and that will move on to city council. Um, the next item is a discussion for Frasca redevelopment from community development. Is Lori doing that one or Carol?
It's a, it's a team effort. Um, Steph McMahon and I are gonna, are going to do this together. Um, and, and she's having a storm out where she is, so if we lose her, Lori will jump in. So, um, I'm giving the history of, um, of redevelopment agreement that we currently have with Frasca. And then, uh, Steph is going to explain the, um, the new proposal. We're bringing this to you, uh, today as a discussion item because we didn't have it ready. Um, we're still having a little pass back and forth with, um, Frasca on language, but we would like to bring this to council for decision-making. So we thought we'd get, you know, any questions you have out tonight. So I, I've done, uh, just one slide that I'm hoping Jason is gonna put up, um, to describe the existing redevelopment agreement that we have with Frasca. Jason, do you have that? There we go, yay. So just for those of you who don't know, Frasca is a company that has been in this area since nineteen fifty-eight, and they build flight simulators. And, um, they, uh, they also run a, um, private airfield off of Airport Road. So back in, so this is a twenty twelve slash twenty fifteen redevelopment agreement because it was, it was amended a couple of times. And it was for a, a three-phase project back in, um, in, in that twenty twelve, twenty fifteen timeframe, where Frasca was anticipating doing some expansion. They were renovating, um, some existing space and then building. And it could have been, if they had built the entire three-phase project, twelve thousand square feet of additional space. They ended up only building, uh, two of those phases. And the, there were two primary components to the redevelopment agreement. First was a real estate tax abatement. And, um, we did the enterprise zone, um, little training tonight because this is in the enterprise zone. But the bulk of this agreement is facilitated by being in the Tax Increment Financing District, which is a lot longer kind of, um, explanation, training that we wanted to do. So this is fairly straightforward what we're bringing to you tonight, but we will be doing a deep dive into TIF. So the real estate tax abatement was for a ten-year term. And the way that it works is you establish a base, which is whatever's existing, that's your baseline. And then when they build whatever they're gonna build, so in this free, three-phase project, there were actually three possible increments of additional tax because there would be additional value, and then there would be a tax associated with that. And they would be eligible for sixty percent of that incremental tax in the form of a rebate for that ten-year period. And it was, again, dependent on the scope of the project. The maximum benefit under that would have been, if for full ten years, if they had done the full project and so forth, was four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. They, they were, were not eligible for that because they did not do the last phase of the project. But the, the, the really kind of important piece of this was that the expressed intent of the project was to add at least forty jobs. So they were doing this expansion. Now, at the same time, the city had committed to reconstruct Airport Road. They wanted the road upgraded and they wanted it widened. And so the cost of Airport Road at that time was about, uh, three point two million dollars. And because the cost of the road was being, um, paid for out of TIF, we had to wait for the balance to accrue to the point where we could pay for that. So it was put into the CIP, um, and it, it had, it was a few years out. And Frasca was interested in accelerating that. So at the time, um, there was a grant available from the State Economic Development, um, Program Grant that, that the city applied for and received that allowed us to accelerate the construction because we got grant money upfront that was, would help. So of that three point two million dollars, about one point four million dollars came from the state. And so there was, there were reporting requirements that Frasca had to meet. And then it was all built around this, this idea of that they would add at least forty jobs. And if the, if the jobs target was not met in five years, then the grant would, um, potentially need to be repaid. So here we are, fast forward to twenty twenty-one. And what actually happened was that there was a retrenchment that Frasca went through, and they did not, not only did they not add jobs, they actually lost jobs. So we wanted to call this to your attention because there's this, there's this issue hanging out there that we potentially have to pay, repay this grant. And what I want you to understand is there's language in the grant agreement that says that, um, they need to do, make reasonable efforts to, you know, meet the jobs target under the economic conditions prevailing at the time. So in their industry, it was, it was declining, it wasn't expanding, which is not what they expected. But, um, we, we still have a case to make with the state that, um, we, we don't have to, you know, that we shouldn't have to repay the, the grant either in part or in full. But we haven't had the opportunity to make that case yet because the folks at the state have basically not been in the office, um, through the entire period of COVID. But the other thing I wanted to call your attention to is the fact that if we hadn't gotten the grant, the city committed TIF money to pay for the road regardless. So we would be paying for the road, we would have paid for the road regardless. So, but this is an open issue, and I didn't want you sometime down the road to be surprised by it if it came back around because it, it does fit into an overall context. And then the last little piece I'll add before, um, I turn it over to Steph, is that in the event that we have to repay the grant, uh, Frasca will pay, um, fifty thousand dollars of that amount. So I'll turn it over to Steph now to explain, um, what we've currently been discussing with them and their, and their expansion that they are, um, on the cusp of starting.
Sure, yeah. So next week I'll be bringing a proposal to you because Frasca is doing a new project now. They're adding an eleven thousand square foot building for flight simulation that's gonna cost approximately one point six million dollars. And they've asked for, um, funding from the city through, from TIF to help out with this project. And because they're located in TIF four, they are eligible for that. They are in the enterprise zone, so they're receiving sales tax exemption on building materials, or they will when they start building. So what we would like to propose offering them for your discussion next week and vote next week hopefully, is fifty percent of the increment, so fifty percent in the increase from their base level taxes to whatever their new tax rate is gonna be when the project is done, fifty percent of that increment for two years for a maximum of fifty thousand dollars. And Frasca is aware that this is kind of what we've put on the table. And, um, they have, they've seen the redevelopment agreement and like the direction it's going. So if you guys would be in favor of that next week, you could approve it or not. So, um, that's kind of where we are right now and what we would bring to you next week. And there will be, all this information will be in your packet that you'll receive before council.
The one, the one thing I just wanna connect the dots for you is that in devising this new, um, this new, um, redevelopment agreement, if we had not gotten the, the EDP grant to accelerate the road construction, the TIF would have paid for the road entirely and, and Frasca would not have paid anything. So in the event we have to repay the grant, they, that, that, this fifty thousand dollars is the maximum we'll receive from them, but it's also the maximum that they can get under this redevelopment agreement for the two-year period.
All right, question, Sharice?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, um, so we may have to repay a grant that we got so that they could be there, correct?
Well, they were there already, they've been there since nineteen fifty-eight.
Okay, so we got the, I'm, I'm just trying to figure this out. So we got the, the grant, the grant to build the road? Or we got the grant to help them expand?
We got the grant to accelerate the construction of the road. So we didn't have the money to build it. Let's say they wanted it next year, and we only had the money to build it five years from now, and they wanted it sooner. And then we got the grant so that we could, we had all the money we needed so we could build it next year as opposed to waiting.
Okay, so what I, I guess what I'm asked, what I wanna know is this, um, because they'll give us fifty thousand dollars, which is.
If we repay the grant, yes.
If we have to repay the grant. What about the, um, employment issue? Will they ever get up to at least forty people employed like they said they would?
Well, at the time, at the time, I don't, I don't, I don't have my notes in front of me about what, where they are currently with their employment, um, numbers. But at the time, they had a hundred and seventy-eight employees. And so I don't know what that current number is, but, um, they still employ a fair number of people there. I, I, I think that's not, that's, that's certainly not associated with this program. It won't be forty, I think there, there might be a handful of new employees. But, um, I don't know that their industry is, is, um, that, you know, it's become a lot more automated.
Mm-hmm, well, I understand, I understand, you know, how, because of, you know, last year was pandemic, in twenty twelve it was a recession. So, and.
There was. Always something.
There's always something, and I get that. But at the same time, and so I understand, you know, everybody was laying people off at, at that time because everybody was broke. So I get that. What I, what I wanna understand though is that even, you know, eventually, if, if they haven't already hired the forty people that they, they had expected to hire at the time, uh, will there be, is there a way that we can say, well, you know, you, you know, it would help, it would help with the trust, uh, between the, the entities? If they, if they haven't hired those forty people, that they get up, they make, at least make that commitment coming out? Because there are, a lot of, there's a lot of unemployment there. Opportunities, it seems like there should be opportunities for, for, uh, for them to hire if, if, if it's possible.
Oh, um, I, I, I don't think it's realistic for, for them. I mean, we had a conversation with them, oh, I don't know, maybe a year and a half ago when we were talking about the grant itself and, and where they stood in their, in their hiring numbers. And I don't know that they think they'll ever get back to the numbers that they had when they, before they even anticipated going to the additional forty. I, I just don't know that they could make a commitment like that.
Okay.
I understand why you would, why you would want that, I just don't think that's realistic for them. They build these, like, I, I don't know, Steph, if you, if you, if you know any more of the detail. I remember reading about this simulator, they're very expensive, but they build them and then they, I think they ship them off to other countries where they, you know, they, there, it's a helicopter sim- simulator, this particular, um, building, because the, the simulator itself is taller than any building that they have there, and they have to build a new building in order to build the simulator. So it's, they build big things, very expensive things, but it's not like a, it's not like a, an assembly line. It's very, they chase contracts for years.
Okay.
Uh, Grace?
Thanks, um, so I was wondering if that, if the Airport Road project is completed or only that part that was funded by the grant so far?
What we committed to was completed, which is from Willow Road to, um, the west side of Cunningham. That's, that was what the commitment was. And, and, um, that's the part that the grant funded. But it would, if we hadn't gotten the grant, that was the part that we had committed to for them.
It seems like, so Airport Road, you said was that three point two million? And we got funding for one point four million section that's complete, or is that not?
There was a local match. So we, we got money from the grant so that it accelerated the, the, um, our ability to do the project because we had some local money, but we didn't have a sufficient amount to, to undertake the project on our own. So getting that grant accelerated our ability to build it in a timely manner, uh, you know, on their schedule as opposed to our schedule. So there's one point eight million, one million eight hundred and forty thousand of local. So that's one point eight million, one million eight hundred and forty thousand of local match.
And that encompasses the three point two million total cost of the whole project that is complete?
Yes.
And you said without that accelerated funds, the city would have been able to get other funding for the entire thing?
It would have come out of the TIF. So there's a, in, in a, in a TIF, similar to, to what an individual project will generate. You designate a TIF area and we'll explain all this in more detail in a, when we do our deep dive. But you basically designate an area and then you set a baseline and then as taxes, as, as the, what do you call that? Equalized assessed value. Basically as the values rise, you skim off that incremental tax and put it into an account, a TIF fund. And then we, as the city, because we are the, I'll, I'll call us the custodians of the TIF. Then we de- develop projects that advance the goals of the TIF. But we're largely spending the money of our taxing partners because we're not the primary tax generator. I mean, the schools, the school district is a huge partner of ours. So if we hadn't gotten the grant, we would have, so the, the local match came out of TIF, then we got the grant. If we hadn't gotten the grant, we would have waited for that increment to build up to the point where it was all TIF money.
Okay, so if we have to pay this back, would that just be out of the city or is there still chances?
It would come out of the TIF.
In the future or those TIF funds?
If we have to pay it back, it will be TIF money that pays it back.
Okay. Thanks.
All right, Diane, did you want to say something?
I just wanted to add a little bit more information about what Frasca does. They really build these very complex and almost customized simulators once they get an order. And when we toured the, the facility several years ago, they explained that they build them on site. Then they dismantle them, they ship them all over the world and then they go and reassemble them on site. So they're very, very customized to the specific need of the client. And this newest, this newest order is, is that as well.
All right, are there any other questions for staff, for Carol or Stephanie?
Grace? Like, was there a, I mean, I understand for Frasca that that was important thoroughfare, but I kind of from the city perspective and using TIF funds, wondering what was kind of the city's benefit or motivation for Airport Road improvements or extension?
Uh, I only know what I read in the, I only know what I read in the council memos that were written when the, when the agreement came. It, you know, there was, it's two thousand and twelve and there was an amendment in two thousand and fifteen. And at the time, and I'm hoping that maybe we can find this report, there's reference made to a report that the Regional Plan Commission did as part of the, of the grant package that talked about the economic spinoff, the benefits of these additional forty jobs and the construction and how that, how that sort of amplified in the economy. I think, knowing what we know now, I think it was, it was definitely something that made sense for the state to fund. Um, I don't know that all that, that benefit accrued to the city of Urbana. It accrued to this, to this area. So, you know, to the county, to the region. So I, I think there was, I, I think that was, that was probably it. And, and we anticipated that the tax base would increase as a result.
And I would just like to add, Grace, I think Carol's been here for three years. Is that right, Carol?
Almost three.
Almost three years. So this, this took place before her tenure. And, and Lori, how long have you been working in the planning, you know, prior to community development?
Wednesday will be my sixth anniversary. And just to add to what Carol said, there was also, I'll call it a pipe dream. I don't know if it is more than that. The thought that connecting Airport Road all the way over to Lincoln would be beneficial. Maybe that's where some of the economic numbers came in, uh, in order to have that connection. So that, that might have also played a role.
When it took place in two thousand and eleven? Okay, uh, no other questions or, oh, Jaya?
Yeah, I, I think with that being said, that recognition of maybe things not working out so much. Can I get clarification on, and I know we'll probably talk about this next week. What is the benefit to the city for this new proposal?
Well, we're expecting there to be increment, you know, that there'll be a, a tax benefit. And it, this, this, um, this, uh, what do I want to say? The abatement, which is a refund, they have to, they have to pay the tax and then apply for a refund. That burns off in two years. And then that, that increment then flows to the, to all the taxing districts. Well, it'll be in the TIF until the TIF expires. But it, it's a, it's tax increment, which is what the, um, that's what the intent of the ta- to the, the TIFs is all about. Is building the tax base, the property tax base.
So I appreciate that we're going to do a deep dive, but for those of us who are new to tips, uh, could we get sent some materials to look at before next week so we can be more informed coming into that conversation?
We can actually do the TIF, uh, deep dive next week. We thought if
So we're not learning about it right before we vote on something?
Yeah, we'll, we'll get you something. We'll, we'll, we'll get you, we'll get you TIF one O one materials before then.
Thank you.
All right, any final questions for staff? Okay, and I actually had a question. So this is coming directly to city council and not going to committee of the whole. Is that because it, the process, did it go through plan commission? What is the process?
This doesn't go through plan commission. Um, they're, they're very anxious to begin construction. And we've been passing things back and forth and we thought if we, if you were comfortable that we would bring this for discussion and then bring it directly to council. I mean, it's not ideal, but it was our hybrid way of, of moving things along. If you decide you want to send it to committee after next week, then, you know, that's certainly your prerogative.
Okay, all right. Now the last item on our agenda is council input and communications. Charisse?
Um, yes, I would just like to acknowledge, um, well, first of all, welcome to all the new city council members. And I'm sorry I haven't gotten to meet any of you in, in person. I will, I'm sure. The other thing I wanted to say is I wanted to acknowledge that, um, we all know Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood. Last week, she lost her eldest son to COVID. And I just want to, uh, send out prayers and thoughts and ask that everybody on the council do the same, uh, for the loss of her son, uh, James and James Junior. And there will be, um, uh, services at the vineyard, visitation, um, on May eighth, there's a, a wake at the Williams, funeral home on fourth, I think it's Fourth Street in, in Champaign, um, the night before. And, um, so I, I know none, you know, none of you guys, I went to school with Jimmy. He lived across the street from me for my childhood. So I know him, I, I know him personally. And it, and I know that she's devastated. And I would just wanted to acknowledge that and, and let her know that. Uh, and, you know, as a alderman of Ward Three and she's been a champion of Ward Three since I was a child, um, that I, I want to personally acknowledge her loss and just, and just say I'm how sorry I am.
Does anybody else like to write comments tonight? Chandra?
Yes, um, just wanted to say thank you for the welcome and so excited to be here. Um, I appreciate the staff taking time to give us presentations over the last couple of weeks to sort of, help us hit the ground running. And so I'm looking forward to the continued presentations. And thank you for bearing with us as we, you know, try to, um, do these ordinances tonight too. That's all.
Thank you. Jaya?
I think Grace actually had her hand up first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
She said, go ahead. Um, I, I would echo the words of, of thanks and appreciation. The welcome from, you know, the seated members, um, or who were already seated and, um, best, you know, appreciate the, the departing. That sounds sad, but the former members for their service as well. I also want to acknowledge that I appreciated that former council member Roberts brought up the May Day walkabout. I know that, um, my, my friends and family enjoyed getting to see more of our local galleries this past weekend. Um, so I appreciated that attention. Related to spending a little bit more time and attention on things, I think we're seeing that we're struggling a little bit with Zoom. Like so many aspects of our life. It was brought up in public comment and I think we could see that even during our meetings that sometimes the little virtual hands especially are getting missed. Um, so maybe trying to be a little bit more thoughtful about taking more time to notice those. I know it's very easy to do, but, um, I, I do hear that our, our community is mentioning that they're, they're not getting their chance to speak. So wanting to be a little bit more mindful about that. Um, and then saying, I think there might be a need for a little bit more parliamentary procedure training. I will say for myself, I am definitely still learning. Um, I think that it's helpful for our community to know too so that other folks who are thinking about running for office at some point don't feel so discouraged. So I appreciate these trainings have been public and if we could continue that by adding some more in around parliamentary procedure, I think that would be helpful as well. Thank you.
Diane?
Yeah, just wanted to just wanted to share a couple of things. One, an announcement. This Saturday, May eighth is going to be the votercade for National John Lewis Voting Rights Action Day. There's seven local organizations sponsoring this, plus the city of Urbana. They, the motorcade will begin at the Country Fair Shopping Center in Champaign at one o'clock. It will be making its way via two different routes through, uh, Champaign and then into Urbana. And they intend to end up around three P M. at Lincoln Square. There will be speakers, music, food, and it's a celebration. And I assume they're registering voters as well. So everyone's encouraged to participate. And this is a recognition and a celebration of, um, very important actions and need to, uh, uh, fight against voter suppression and to get people registered to vote. Uh, secondly, I wanted to address a comment that was made during public input last week and clarify. Uh, there was a, uh, claim that the city of Urbana was censoring comments on the Imagine Urbana website. The Imagine Urbana website is our site that's set up to take public input on, um, our comprehensive plan. And one part of that website is, has an Urbana Places map where people can pin, put a pin in it and then talk about that location in Urbana. The, or city of Urbana is not censoring comments. This website is being hosted by a third-party platform. It's the Global Moderation Team from Bang the Table. So some of you may be very familiar with this public engagement company. But the way this process works is that when a member of the public wants to post anything on the Imagine Urbana website hosted by Bang the Table, the users first register. And then you can post comments and then part of the registration process is anytime you register, you have to check, I agree to the terms of use. And, um, which lists the moderation rules and then the privacy policy. I won't read all the moderation policy, uh, comments, but a couple of the, points of the policy are relevant to the, um, comments that were made last week. One was never identify a staff member of the consulting organization. In this case, that's the city of Urbana by name. The second one is don't defame anyone or the organization. A comment is defamatory if it lowers or harms the reputation of a person or organization. If you want to assault, insult anyone, this is not the place to do it. If you wish to accuse anyone of wrongdoing or incompetence, these are the rules established by Bang the Table for the, um, taking input on the comp plan. So the comments in question, the first time a comment was submitted, this person named a staff member by name. The second time, they also, they removed the staff person's name, but, uh, was deleted by the moderator for the response to potentially identify users or members of staff. Please depersonalize this for reposting. So each time a comment is put on the site, and I don't think there are many. If they're, if they violate the moderation policy, the commenter is notified and asked to modify the comments to meet the, the policy. We, and, and that's up then to the user to choose to do that. We do, um, they do keep all the comments that are not posted and we have access to those. So we do see, we can see the comments, they just won't be publicly listed on the site. The city of Urbana does not moderate this site. We have heard, we've hired Bang the Table to do it. And again, the point of the site is to get input on our comprehensive plan. And there are other options and ways to complain about particular city policies or, incidents. So just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
All right, uh, Phyllis, I'd like to make a comment. Do I have to pass the chair? Since this is just comment portion?
Well, you're entering debate. So if that's what you're doing, yes, but just to make a comment, you don't have to.
Okay, all right. I'm just making a comment. I just wanted to address some of the concerns tonight about, um, public input. Um, so just to let everybody know, uh, city of Champaign asks for city of residents. I have never muted anybody for failure to provide their city of residence, nor have I asked them again if they choose not to do so. Um, but it does seem like there is some confusion in terms of whether or not it's required or not. So in the future, at the beginning of public input, I will clearly state that this is optional. You will not be at, you will be asked at the beginning, but you do not have to answer. You do not have to give any reason for not answering. Um, so I just kind of wanted to address that specific item. Uh, the second item that came up in public input was the fact that I was being investigated for, um, violation of Openset Meetings Act. And I just wanted to clarify that a little bit. There was a complaint filed in terms of the Election Commission Board in which, um, we responded by providing some additional information. So it was a complaint process. Um, you can call it an investigation or you can, or you cannot call it an investigation. But I did want to clarify what that was about. So those are my comments. All right, um, I think that
I had a question.
Uh, but, okay, Grace?
All right, comment.
Uh, yes, not a question. This was my original council input.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, is this the appropriate time for that?
This is the appropriate time, yes.
Um, has there been a timer going or I can time myself? We're doing four minutes? I can, I have one, just wondering.
I think it's three minutes and we have not been putting the timer up.
I'll time myself and try and be on it. Um, just wanted to say that I'm honored and humbled to be a part of this new city council. And I appreciate the information and support so far. I'm looking forward to serving with, um, serving the people of Urbana on this council with the new members, the staff and others in the city and community. Um, one thing I do really want to mention is community gun violence and, um, attention and money and resources towards that with healing and prevention involving things like youth and community support and investment. Um, when we get particularly some of the, um, new COVID money coming in. When I hear millions of dollars for a road, I would just love for those millions of dollars to go towards something like programs that directly help those who are most impacted by these things in our community. Um, also looking forward to addressing housing, discrimination, emergency response and police accountability. Um, and just for the public, I'd say please continue to speak, keep, uh, speaking up in public input and contacting us. I'll volunteer myself. Please contact me about anything. We have our new emails. Mine's G Wilken at UrbanaIllinois.us. And then last point about the asking about residency, um, just and I'll add on to my comment. I think that we don't need to ask, um, I don't see why we would ask just because Champaign does. Um, especially if we're not requiring or even heavily pressuring that people, um, answer the question. Um, I think it would make more sense to be clear and consistent and just not ask if we don't need it. And that's all. Thank you.
All right, I think most people have had an opportunity to provide comment. Um, so that is last item on our agenda. And with that, I
Name's Quiz and Barry.
So Jayla, this is what we need. We need multiple people keeping a hand on, on the
Uh, I, I just heard up and you're going to have to use, get used to me going
I, I just heard up and you're going to have to use, get used to me going last because I'm Ward Seven. I did want to ask though. Is our process always to vote in Ward Order? For every vote? Is that the, the practice?
It has been.
Because it's really advantageous if you're in Ward Seven to get to see what everyone else is doing. I'm just mentioning that because. When I was on county board, they actually rotated who they started the roll call with across meetings. So that one person wasn't with the last one. I do want to say that I, I'm, I'm really excited about being involved in. Local government. Again, I enjoyed my time on the county board. This seems like an excellent team to work together with. I'm already, for Ward Seven, I'm already. Connecting with the soonest hearing committee to hear from them about their concerns. And I know there are events coming up with the Silverwood neighborhood. In early June, so there's some, a lot of opportunities to get engaged. It is important to remember and I, and I'm going to. Hold myself to this that, you know, although I'm elected by Ward Seven and they, they are where I get my voice from as a, as a ward representative. I represent all of Urbana and so. I hope you aren't concerned if I ask questions about things that are centered in your wards like I did with. The development in. Ward Six tonight. I'm, I'm going to be very engaged and I'm going to ask a lot of questions and. If you are, are wondering why I'm asking those questions, I will be always well, willing to tell you, don't, don't presume. That I'm asking questions on a particular agenda or going towards a particular item. I think we make our best decisions. When we turn over all the rocks and, and ask all the questions that occur to us. Not all of them provide the answer to the, the question, but. I, I hope you join me in that kind of inquiry and, and we have a good time for the next four years working together. Thanks.
All right. Stop me. Okay, all right. With this, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much. Welcome everyone.
Good night.
Night.